Meeting video and audio recorded for posterity by the Cable Broadcast Network of Diamond, Mass. If you all could rise to the plate, please, I appreciate it. Raise your plate.
The United States of America, the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First item on the agenda is a Form A plan from Raymond Shaw on Maple Street, map one one four.
James Hall, multiple engineering, representing our client. We're here tonight mostly informational. We have a Form A plan that we're drawing on both sides of Oak, Maple Swamp. And what we planned on doing is coming in front of the board with the retreat lot. The question that we have, we've heard, but I have not seen, that we want to on the opposite side, go back to back with retreat lots. So this is the plan that we're also going to be... I'll just put you guys each one, the new version. This sort of in red, obviously, it takes what we like to do. So as you can see, we have two big retreat lots.
Now, is this separate from this?
That's a separate, two different items.
This is across the street?
This is across the street. This is a...
This is the north side, this is the south side?
That's correct.
Okay.
And this is, this is the one where the selectmen haven't signed off, correct? As far as, the selectmen are gonna have to sign up, sign off on this plan for recreation.
Oh, right.
And that's, that's what's in front of them.
Okay.
So what you see is the two lot, if they can endorse tonight, the two lot.
Yes.
Okay.
So lot three is eight and a quarter acres, lot four is one and a half acres. And these lots in the front are also new or existing?
Yep, no, they'll be new, that's your typical Form A lot, so.
Okay.
Frontage and area with town water. As we move over to Maple Swamp into the bowl fields, we have wetlands, obviously, and we want to take advantage of... Well, the second question I should ask is that we have frontage in the swamp and we want to get access, obviously, through similar forty to fifty foot strips. So this, the small plan's conceptual, obviously, we will bring the final plan in with Perk Test and the wetlands have been finalized today. So we're looking for some input from the board on, first of all, back to back retreat lots. And second of all, accessing lots, even though where our ownership would be on a public way, the frontage would be from somewhere else. I see no bylaw.
So which, which, which plan is the board considering at this time?
The, the, the plan, the board's considering the larger plan at this time, that, that's what's been submitted.
So let's set aside this.
Okay. John DuValli told me he had a slot for informational on the agenda. Do you have that on the agenda?
I have a public input at the end of the meeting.
Okay, at the end of the meeting, so.
Yeah.
So that, he, he said sixteen, he told me six o'clock he'd get on the agenda for informational on this, also with that.
Well, we may, we may find that we have time.
Okay.
But let's talk about this first.
Okay.
Now, we spoke informally about this at the last meeting. I believe there were issues of, not our issues, but we suggested that, that the applicant make sure that they, make sure that they're legally on solid ground before they make, decide where the lines are as far as the wetlands are and also it's recreational, so if it's, you may want to just continue it until the recreational issue is resolved.
Right, I agree.
The zoning, because half of it is recreational and what, a portion, a portion is recreational, a portion is...
The lots are not going to be in the recreational anyway. The plan you draw. Well, not where you build it.
Not where you build it, but the recreational lots would end up in the recreational, the lots would end up, portion, portion of it would be in the recreational district.
Well, that's recreational, right?
Right, so recreational, which, you want to ask Mr. Shore, who's at the selectman?
No, he says they, they have all the information.
They have all the information, the selectmen have not acted on their refusal.
That's the sixty-one A.
Other sixty-one.
That's different from recreational.
No, uh, well, for, the recreational is, they could, they could purchase the property also.
Oh, okay.
They have to deny it.
Have you been before them yet?
Uh, not, is the attorney running for them?
No, right, no.
No, okay. It's, it's submitted.
Yeah, they were just waiting for the separation of this property, basically.
Right.
To pull it out of the sixty-one A.
Because this, this property stays with Mr. Shore and this property will be conveyed.
But it's all on the sixty-one A, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that first has to be denied before you can actually subdivide, right?
Yep.
Well, I think, sorry, if I could just jump in one second. Um, my understanding was that a portion of it wanted to be taken out of sixty-one A. But in order to do that, he has to do the Form A so that the assessor can come up with the dollar amount of what's gonna remain in the sixty-one A and what's gonna come out of the sixty-one A. So that's why they're before the planning board at this point, is to make a determination of which portion of that property is gonna come out of the sixty-one A. So that, and then, once that is done, then the planning board would have to act on their portion of the releasing of the sixty-one A like we've done before. Then we send the recommendation to the board of selectmen and then they make the final determination on the right of first refusal. So from the assessor's standpoint, in order to determine what's coming out of the sixty-one A, we have to determine what we're gonna do here first.
Exactly.
Right?
Yep, exactly right. The selectmen's office wanted to see the separation on a plan.
You know, we already act on the sixty-one A.
Not for this lot?
Not for this one.
So what, where, where's the designated area of recreation on that plan right now?
From here back.
From here back.
It's at Archer here.
From here back.
Okay, so this is actually...
Uh, in recreation?
Recreation?
Uh...
None of those.
No, those are the lot sizes.
That's the size.
Twenty-five and, was it twenty-five and twenty-four is the two acres size?
Oh, these two, these two.
And where are you planning to build it?
Somewhere fifty acres.
The building would be obviously outside the recreation.
Here, here.
Right now, this plan is strictly for the selectmen to be approved tonight so they can deny or, you know, accept that they want that property.
So...
We haven't got to the point, obviously, for lots yet.
Has, so this formally hasn't even been through the process of denial of the right of first refusal?
This is part of the process.
Part of the process.
It had to, it had to be, because the whole thing's not coming out of there, they had to show it separated.
All right, so Mr. Shore keeps his parcel and stays, his parcel gets conveyed out. So really, we're talking parcel two, that's what we're talking about tonight, correct?
Parcel two, but what, well, what we're talking about is, is the, the Form A subdivision.
Right.
It's a legitimate Form A, right? It doesn't mean it's buildable.
No, that's really not our...
Exactly. That's not what we're voting for.
That's right.
Right.
Any other comments from board consultants? Anything from the public, any one want to make any comments about this particular issue? So we probably should entertain a motion to accept?
I'll make that motion because this is the first step in the process. Like as I said, as I mentioned, it doesn't mean it's buildable, but it's a legitimate Form A, so.
I'll second it.
On paper?
All right.
Do you have, do you have my orders here? Bring the mylar in, leave it with Kerry and then we'll sign it. You can record it.
Okay. Very good.
How is that? Now, as far as the Miranda, is that six fifteen or six twenty?
Just immediately following this.
So, so that you're not here until the very end, we may as well talk about the other issue since it's just informal.
Okay.
I think we may, we consult with our attorneys if we could spread that plan out again so I can...
It really came about, Mr. Chairman, because quite frankly, with the new bylaw that just came out passing sound meeting, um...
Which one?
For retreat lots.
Retreat lots, they were a year ago roughly.
But, uh, I'm not sure how many the board has seen, but it's pretty common.
I've seen a few.
Most counties do have a bylaw that will say two back to back and that's it, you can't have more than that, but you guys don't have any language that saying to that. You don't, uh, have any...
We already have some that are back to back.
You do?
Yeah.
All right, so it's something that's a practice that is allowed, so that my clients ask that, first of all. And second of all, is if you have a lot with frontage on two streets or one street and you have proper frontage and area, I guess you could say in your bylaw, you also refer to gerrymandering, which is referring to, you know, big long rat tails coming up lots, and I don't think we have that. We're just trying to use the upland portion.
Twenty percent. No more than twenty percent can be by law.
How much is this entire parcel?
Uh...
Total land?
Yeah, total land.
This thirty-two acres.
Thirty-two acres, and thirty-two acres is a potential of eleven lots. Well, the intent of the, the retreat lots was to give people other ways to develop their properties rather than a full-blown subdivision. And this may be a little on the...
Full-blown.
More developed than not, but if it meets our bylaw, then I think...
Well, I would argue that if we came in where the two retreat lots are, where the short dead end cul-de-sac, we would end up with more lots on Oak Street than is shown. So in other words, if we came in and we came into this area here, we could start getting lots all around the cul-de-sac and...
Oh, I, I understand. Do we have a PDF of this plan?
Uh, I don't believe you do, but I get the...
Could you email a PDF of this plan to Kerry so that we can run it before our council? I believe that this is allowable by our bylaw, but I would like to have our attorney review it to make sure that we're not going down the wrong path.
That's why I'm here, and it is schematic in nature, and we're obviously in the middle of this project right now, so I will, you know, we've been out there with the perks and obviously the wetlands, all that good stuff, so I will give you the latest version. I'll email it to you.
Any other questions?
I mean, nine looks like it's gerrymandering a lot.
As does eight, in my opinion.
Well, eight has this area, well, it's wetland. Yeah, you, question about eight and nine being buildable lots.
And, and, and we haven't, like I said, we haven't done the final configuration of, of those lots. So, there's, there's two discussions, obviously, the retreats and then obviously the discussion over near the bowl field, so.
So in particular, we're gonna be talking to council about the review of the retreat lots.
Kerry, what is retreat lots?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine.
Really ten times.
I didn't know that.
Just, just to be, this is all wagon, right?
It's all that.
You know, no more than, I believe it's twenty percent can be wetlands.
No more than twenty percent wetlands and no more than twenty percent upland.
Wetlands. I believe that's what I'm looking for right now.
This is the retreat lot.
So this lot comes all the way back to here, right?
Correct.
Uh, no, this one?
Yeah.
It's just that corner.
This one? This one here, it's actually something, it's obviously one of the smaller.
No. So the lot land, the location right here? This is dry and this is...
Do all these Form As, keep this as one lot.
Yeah.
Come before us again, and so this is what we want, these Form As as well, so.
On the, on the wetlands, it's at least eight acres total and one acre at least up.
One up, yeah, we have that.
Of the retreat lot, right?
On page sixty, I know you see near the top.
So the ones you see up front on Oak Street that we're showing are basically your minimum size lot, which is thirty...
Yeah, your basic Form As.
Yeah, so, so you can clearly see we have the, the upland area.
Well, it's hard to see, it's, yep.
We have done, I know, I know we've done that calculation if it's the one acre, so that's for sure.
Well, that's a different, that's a different criteria on the zoning, the definition of a lot.
But the, page fifty-nine is...
Specific to the retreat lots.
Correct. So you're not gonna co-mingle.
They'd be separate, they'd be separate, I mean, you're gonna do the Form A and create the retreat lots, right?
Right.
Okay. And I guess if, if the board approves the Form A, then they're not saying that the whole lots are buildable. That's up to you to figure out.
Uh, it's a different conservation subdivision.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying.
These two would be retreat lots.
The retreat.
And the rest is the Form As. So we'd be saving any of the others, I don't think.
Hmm, true.
All right, all right.
Not crazy about lot nine. Lot eight and nine.
Hmm?
Lot eight and nine. Well, eight is off of Maple Swamp, right?
No, they're both on.
They're both on.
But whether they meet the, the Form A definition as far as the gerrymandering is something for...
Yeah.
A little research on our part.
I would offer a ten, a ten-foot strip or fifteen-foot strip I would consider gerrymandering. I don't think a fifty-foot strip is what, what we are gonna propose, but this is schematic in nature, I think, but we're gonna, we're gonna have forty or fifty, just like a retreat lot, because it seems like the zoning committee in town said that's what police fire and access, that would be suitable.
Nine is two point six four, is that correct? That's the acreage for the entire lot, right?
Right.
Has to be eight acres.
No, no, it's not a retreat lot.
This has frontage.
This is... Oh, okay, too.
Yeah.
Well, these two, all right.
There's town water on Oak, but not Maple Swamp, so obviously there's two different lot configurations that are required.
So basically, this is two hundred and fifty feet of frontage minimum.
Correct. So that's what we're gonna do, two fifty, two fifty, two fifty, then over here we're showing how to get in, but this is gonna be fashioned up in the final plan, if, if the concept is suitable.
Water, we're still now, right? Town water?
No, Maple Swamp.
I'm saying Maple Swamp.
Now, the frontage for lot eleven is gonna be off Maple Swamp?
Mm-hmm.
No water?
No water. Eleven, uh, ten and eleven just gonna be conventional lots, you know, frontage and area.
No water, you need, you need, uh...
Two fifty.
Right, two fifty and the, the larger area are obviously...
Yeah, forty-five, whatever, what's an acre?
Forty-five, five sixty.
Something like that. Yeah, that one looks a little short. We have to steal something like ten to get the, the acreage.
It is schematic, just schematic, you know, to give you guys the concepts to get your arms around, you know, this is something that, I don't want to do the final version and say...
Right, no, again, if you could send us a PDF, we'll have more time to...
Okay.
Think it through, rev- review our bylaws as, as it relates to what you're maybe proposing.
Yeah, well, uh, yeah, a lot to consider here.
Have town council give us their opinion, or, or, or council, I should say.
Yeah. Doesn't he have this app, this?
It's not, it's conceptual, there's really nothing to talk about that. I mean, he, he has a plan, he has one of these, once we have the PDF, we'll make sure everybody has them. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take after chairs on it, huh?
Next item on the agenda is, is continuance of the special permit for Arthur and Bernie Miranda at Zero Elm Street, map twenty-three, lot fifteen point one.
Hello?
Do you have a new plan for you?
I don't know.
Use the revised plans.
Hold on, hold on, they want to hear it too.
Remove the driveway over, it's the existing driveway going in, we're gonna leave that so we get the grass across the strip in here. And shows the twelve-inch pipe across the front, and then you wanted a twenty-foot buffer. We've got a little more than twenty, twenty-six feet, and then you wanted a house moves over, so this is sixty-six point nine from the back, sixty-six point nine to the side, so we doubled it.
No.
And we gave you the driveway going back.
This is what the fire chief...
Apartment wanted, yep.
This lot is now twenty-one feet wide right here?
No, that's not the lot, this, this is...
Well, it looks like the lot, is it, is this the lot line?
No.
Where is the, there are two lots, so this should be...
Yeah, this is the lot line.
So if this is the lot line...
You can't have less than twenty, so we get twenty-one.
Okay, is that correct on a retreat lot?
Can't have less than twenty.
Let's start out, why do you know less than twenty?
Okay.
So this gives you a big grass area.
Yep.
That's a compactable material.
Yeah, stone, it's got it right here, see it, the compactable material, and then here starts the asphalt. So three hundred feet back starts the asphalt, so we get three hundred feet, where it's all done for you. And then we showed you the wetlands line in the back and the buffer.
You got sufficient room?
Yeah.
Didn't really affect anything.
No.
Peter, didn't we usually have a detail on a, on a, on a pipe, a culvert along the road? There's no detail, so I'm not sure that that's...
Something Tom Ferry was asking for.
No, I, I know you're asking for it, but I would expect to see more, more detail.
There might be a pipe there now, but Tom said it might be...
Yeah, maybe just a, a stone culvert, I think. He, he's showing what he's gonna be putting in the toilets.
And it'll be under his direction.
He's gonna, he's gonna invite me down here when the ditch is open during that fill. And he brought these two together to stop the sheeting of the water going directly down.
Yep.
So minimize that.
That's why you split it, because the last plan it showed, they're both coming out straight.
Yeah, yeah, we give them more grass every here so that none, none of that water shoots out there.
Give it more time to...
Give it more time to dissolve it.
I'm a little, still a little concerned, but I'm, I'm grateful that he's invited me down here during the process of that crossing here.
Yeah, while we're digging it and installing it, it's gonna be there, so it'll be done the way he wants it.
But I think we should still have it on, on the plan, some kind of detail.
It shows the twelve-inch pipe.
Well, that's not a detail, that's just a couple of lines on a piece of paper. Details show depths, that shows, you know, an engineered plan.
Well, he wants, what, one foot cover over the pipe, but it's, there's a, there's something there existing. So all we're gonna do is take it out and replace it with a twelve-inch pipe.
Yeah, I'm gonna match it to the, the final of our existing swell. So they, they don't have to meet elevations of another structure or pipes. I, I understand what you're saying, so that's gonna be your call, but he's matching the existing conditions.
Are you okay with this?
With this, the way he's presenting and having me down there, yes.
And the reality is, whatever is on paper may not match what is in reality, so you're better off being there than depending on a piece of paper.
I think this may be the bad way to go, like I said, he's not trying to match a structure except for, you know, the alignment with the crosspipes, but that's not his goal, he's just matching the, the existing swell.
That way, he'll be there, it'll be done the way he wants it to.
Could we get an house built with that?
After, I can get you next book.
And there's two culverts going across the street?
In that mid area, yes.
They're already there, they're existing.
Okay, time to tell him the plan.
Yeah, they're existing.
I think you did all the things we asked you to do last time you were here.
Yep.
Clear it appears.
Will there be some riprap stone placed at the culverts? Be some riprap stone placed at the culvert, inlets and outlets?
Yeah.
Okay, that should be a condition, so it's not showing in the plan. Peter?
What?
There should be riprap stone placed at the inlet and outlets.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
These should be inspection by the town and highway.
Town and highway, that's big.
Be a condition of approval.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Uh, just for the record, which, you know, I did receive an email from the fire chief okaying the revised plans. So that's all set from the fire chief's perspective. I also received an email from Conservation Commission stating that the hundred foot, foot buffer in the back is okay on that as well.
There was a man-made pond, where was that, I don't see that here.
That was in the front on the lagerant, probably.
They had a file.
Yes, there was no comment, it was actually...
This was all booked in the, in the, they had a file for that.
Oh, okay.
Right here is the man-made pond. The Conservation Commission did not comment on that, all they did was comment on these that we have on the flat.
If you sat this all approved, it's, it's not under that one.
Yeah, I understand.
It was approved, it's a name, because part of that house is in the, in the, this is all in the buffer zone. They get a drain that comes across here, including that was in the buffer zone, so that was all approved by Conservation.
Other comments from the board? Anyone in, from the public like to comment on this plan?
Yes, I, with Tom, what do you think with the drainage for that right there? Because I know I have the house right across the street, how much is that gonna affect my property? Is it gonna, because I have a, a stone basement?
Correct.
And I have some leakages down there, and my main concern right now is the drainage.
Right, did, did you see the new plan?
Uh, yeah, I saw it, I saw it today.
They brought the two driveways together and then brought it back apart, so that's stopping the full sheeting of the whole hill going directly, you know, down the driveway to the ditch. So it'll allow any water during a rain event or storm event, more time to saturate the soil before it...
There was, there was that ledge, is it all ledge underneath there though? Because what I'm concerned about is when you have drainage, it's gonna seep into the soil and come on the road and into my basement. I mean, and you, you know the area with that big rock there?
I mean, I'm not denying that, but it's not creating anymore than what's happening now, he's just controlling the runoff.
Yeah.
That's what he's doing, and I, I think that may be the best way to go unless someone else can do the best plan. It's better than a straight shot going straight to the road.
Right, right.
There is probably have now.
It has been, yeah, yeah, definitely.
Tom, Peter? One thing, you have an eighteen inch pipe draining into a twelve-inch pipe. I'd be questioning whether that's gonna be adequate.
The one that's upstream?
Yes, is eighteen.
No, I think it's twelve into eighteen.
Twelve, twelve into eighteen.
All right.
This going downhill, from the twelve to the eighteen is downhill, correct?
Yeah. And, uh, what was Peter's comments, was there a contingency to be down there?
Yeah, we get a contingency that he's there, I want him there.
I, I just wanted to know how it was where, that's all.
Well, we haven't had any votes, so.
Yeah.
Does he recommend that an eighteen instead of a twelve? Peter?
They're saying it, it flows the other way, if it's twelve into eighteen, that's perfectly fine. Yeah, it's, it's fine.
Other comment?
Tom, do you have any, uh, any plan on claiming that the drainage ditch that went alongside the road there, it's all over the road, you know, in front of the storm wall, further down?
As, as you, um, as Mr. Perry mentioned last meeting, he's some, uh, possible plants of interest there, so.
How do I do that? Right, right. And I'm also concerned about the, the pond that's there, um, conservation committee looked at the wetlands, but they didn't address the pond that's there.
They approved every, they approved, when they built this house, they approved this whole area, 'cause the whole area was in that wetlands area, that's all been approved, that was approved by conservation. If it wasn't, they couldn't have built that house, because they had to put a drain across here to drain the water across their property.
I know, I, I was here at the meeting, and I didn't have any approval or disapproval on the pond, because it, the, the discussion was, is it a fertile pond or not?
No.
Nobody.
The conserva, the conservation approved it.
No, 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 the conservation approved this lot, the conservation said, had no comments about this driveway that may be within a hundred feet of that pond.
Right, because they already, they already approved this for this.
But they did not approve this as it relates to this.
I'm, I'm going to conservation, I'm gonna be going to conservation.
Okay, so. So should we approve this, that doesn't give you carte blanche approval to build within a buffer zone?
I have to go to conservation.
You still may have to get a notice of intent?
I gotta file a notice.
Or at least, or you do have.
No, I'm on, oh, yeah, no, no, just file a notice of intent.
Because the edge of that pond to the edge of this proposed driveway is approximately sixty-five feet, and I believe the no touch zone is a hundred.
The, the buffer zone is a hundred, the no touch zone, either conservation is thirty-five, twenty-five, so he may have to have, he will have to submit it.
I gotta file an intent.
And, and the issue will be putting up hay bales and, or, or a, a hay sock, whatever it's called, and, and going by their requirement, which probably will be minimal.
Right.
But to ensure that silt isn't getting into that pond, or anything affecting the, the wetlands.
Yeah, I've already been in touch with conservation, I've got a notice of intent.
Now, conservation will have a meeting on this, and they will notify the, upon it.
Yep, yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, now also, there's a, um, adjustment on the plan, the road itself?
No, this is.
Did I notice, there's a change that you made to the road?
Yeah, we left it on the existing road, we didn't move the, this is, this is existing, this has been here for a hundred years, that's existing, this here goes all the way back, comes out to Anderson Drive. This road here, that's a move we cut it, uh.
Originally it was closer here.
We, we had it closer, we moved it over so we could leave all this grass to stop that, stop any water.
Let's see this place, it's once.
Yeah.
Yeah, shut them right up.
We had it going straight, that would have put, that would have put more water this way, so.
Absolutely. This, this was straight from all the way down, this was straight made here, now you made adjustment here.
Yeah, to put more grass and stop the water.
Gravel starts right here, three hundred feet.
Gravel starts here, gravel starts here, asphalt starts from here back, so you get three hundred foot of gravel along all the way down to the street.
Now, what, what about this area here where it's congested now?
This is grass, this is all grass in between here.
No, it was supposed, it was, it was an agreement with the board that there was gonna be a certain amount of space?
Four feet.
Four feet?
Or PD decides it's gotta be twenty feet wide.
In, in the center, there's between the two driveways, it was supposed to be.
It doesn't matter between, it just has to be, it just has to be twenty feet wide for, for the fire.
And we left this grass, so it slows any water coming downhill, going to, going, but you've got two drains going, you've got two drains going into your property.
Well, actually I have three.
Three.
There's another one.
Yeah, those drains have been there since.
My sign along, yeah.
Yeah, those drains have been there since Elm Street was built.
Absolutely.
Those drains have always been.
My house has been there for a hundred and thirty, forty years.
And this is always, this land has always gone that way, always, and, and like I say, we're not putting no asphalt, so we're not pushing the water down here, and we're giving you more grass, the slower it is down before it gets here.
Right. Now, this is, this is asphalt in here?
Yeah, yep.
Now, is there any way, um, um, to get something on the plans to say that this can never be paved?
Yes, that will be.
Yeah.
Then we'll get a condition.
That's a condition.
Alright, alright. My, my, like I said, my main concern is the drainage.
Yeah.
Onto my property, because out back here, it just gets in the springtime, it gets flooded. And once you change the topography of the land, everybody knows, you mess with mother nature, it's gonna mess with your back.
And we're gonna put some, we suggest we put some riprap back here, so that'll even stop it more from going out.
And you can even have a crown so that
Yeah.
it starts flowing this way rather than straight down.
Yeah.
That's just common sense.
That, that stone will flow it right down.
Yeah.
I just put that little bit of gravel in here and it flowed it right down, didn't it?
It, it, it did stop, it did stop the flooding in there?
Yeah. Yep.
Now, is there, is there a grading here, because it does, it gradually comes down, can we get it somewhere where the grading is a lot, a lot less, so it just drains off into the adjacent land?
Yeah, this, this, this right now flows this way, so what we can do is just push everything so it flows this way. When I build the driveway, yeah, I, that's no, I got, put the driveway, it doesn't make a difference to me, I can just, you know, float it down so it goes into here.
I bet somewhere you have a two percent.
Yeah.
Uh, slope, something that wasn't over here?
Yeah, this, yeah, this one, this, this property all flows this way, like this, it comes down, but it flows this way, it doesn't go up this way, it goes this way. So I don't wanna put too much, 'cause I don't wanna put too much.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying?
And you have the pond that's here, too.
Yeah, but you don't wanna put too much water going this way, because then you're gonna push it down here, I would rather just, you know, very slightly, so that it stops the water before it gets out.
Now, Kelly, did you hear from the, the, uh, fire department about that?
Fire chief did respond to me this afternoon and said he was okay with it.
He was out of, okay, 'cause it's, it's a little bit thinner there, where the road is here. Okay.
Other comments from the public? Okay, so the motion would be, and so that you don't have to repeat what I say, you can just say, so moved. Uh, so the motion, would anyone like to entertain a motion to accept this plan with the conditions that the town engineer coordinate and supervise the installation of the, uh, drainage pipe? That riprap is installed at the entrance between the driveway and the southern, uh, lot line, that the driveway, three hundred feet of the driveway from Elm Street to the west is never paved. That the crown on the driveway is installed so that the stormwater flows more to the south than to the east. All you have to say is so moved.
I know, you, you mentioned town engineer, what's happening about?
Town.
Highway.
Highway, highway, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Highway superintendent, thank you.
So moved.
Would anyone like to second?
Say a second.
Oh, on favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, there you go, thank you.
Thank you.
So you will need to bring a, uh, a Mylar and the proposed deed restriction, which our attorney will, will bless, and then we'll.
There'll be a twenty-one day appeal period.
Yep, alright, so you want to get the Mylar.
Mylar, and then we'll get the.
And then you get the restriction.
Now, is this continued with the conservation?
Yeah, I gotta go to conservation. Yeah, you have to, you can't, I can't do anything unless I go to, I, I already been to them to file a notice of intent, that's already in, in motion.
I think that motion was also to include the conservation commission's.
Just so you know, also, there is a twenty-one day appeal period to, to appeal the decision of the board.
Right, now, the conservation, if they disagree or they have comments, will it still be approved or not?
I go to. It's all, it all depends on conservation, they have to approve it.
Okay.
Now, uh, the next item on the agenda, before we go any further, is, uh, the acceptance of Sylvia Way at the pond. Which is ten minutes late, but the legal capacity for this room is forty-five?
Forty-five.
So with this many people, if you all wanna be included in this public hearing process, then we have to continue it and move it to a different venue at another date.
Wait, that's not including that area back there though, right?
I don't know.
So some people could go back in that area over there?
Well, that would be an exit, sir, in case of an emergency.
Right, but again, but it's, it's a room.
Capacity's forty-five for this room?
For this, for this room here, and we used to have a desk over there, which is a, that area over there is ZBA, so I'm not sure we got enough people.
I don't think so.
Forty-five is the max.
We need to do a head count, but it was.
And that includes the people on the front of the bathroom, you do a head count, so.
You didn't need to come anyway, Nancy.
Thanks for coming, Nancy.
Taking a break, man. No, 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 no.
What do you got, Tom?
Forty-five.
It's not complete.
If you want.
We, we should.
We got a forty-seven.
Well, there's still more than forty-five.
Well, we need a couple of people to lead.
Alright, there you go, forty-five.
Sit down, my wife loves.
Are we legal now?
Forty-four.
Yep.
Forty-four.
Forty-four, okay, so, we will now open the public hearing for the pines, the road acceptance, acceptance of Sylvia Way. And the first item I would like to bring to everyone's attention, that according to Peter Williams, our consulting engineer, the project is not complete and should not be accepted by the town, based on their, uh, punch list items that it's not a, it's not complete. So for us to, to accept this plan, or to accept this road as, as a public way, would be, or to recommend it to the town, I should say, is, uh, it's not appropriate, because the, the, it's not finished. I'm sure you all would love to have it finished and accept it as a public way, sir.
Mister Chairman, the, the, that was disclosed to you, and there is, the zoning board of appeals has, there's a bond posted with the zoning board of appeals, with, uh, Mr. Williams' knowledge, that to cover any, any punch list items that may come up, uh, uh, that, that, that you are defining as incomplete, uh, because of.
But do we typically accept roads before they're complete? No.
Well, what's a punch list, what is, what is not complete on a road?
The bounds are not in there, they're.
The, the bounds are all in.
No, I couldn't find them all, there, there's items of the detention basins that need upgrading, there's, there's items, and there's work in the roadway that needs to be done, and, you know, it's, it's not done.
We've been, we've been in communication with this board for two months now, I wish this was disclosed to me that, that, oh, you know, bond.
Well, you're aware of the work, the road isn't done under, through the work to the ZBA.
I certainly was, I certainly was, but I was.
In most towns, I mean, how are you gonna have a town-owned road, and then you have rights, then who's gonna have the rights to go in and repair it, if the town owns it, but you're under a bond to get the work done, to have, you know, exterior, uh, outside contract to come in and do these repairs on town property?
Well, town prop, the, the, the detention ponds are never gonna be town property, the detention ponds you're speaking of, uh, this is what was discussed, this, the only thing that will be town property is the pavement and what's under the pavement, and that, there's nothing to be done over there. This is what was proposed by zoning board of appeals, that, that only the pavement and what's under the pavement, so anything aside, outside the pavement is not gonna be town property.
Can I understand that, that the, uh, all the drainage and stuff like that will be the town's responsibility?
No, that's what I'm saying, the drainage, uh, detention ponds, which is part of the drainage system, is not the town's property.
But you said everything under the pavement.
Under the road, this, this, yes.
The drainage is under the pavement.
The drainage system that's under the pavement is gonna be the town property, that's correct.
The town responsibility, that is correct. And about the sidewalks, sir, are you, do you want us to accept the sidewalks also, or you're just talking about the street?
Just the street.
Not the sidewalks?
Correct.
The town will never be.
You would, you would, I don't, I, aren't these sidewalks within the right of way?
Yes, this is really up to the town, the, 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 what I'm speaking about is what the zoning board of appeals proposed, they proposed that anything under the pavement is the town property. Now, um, if, 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 if you feel that, okay, anything within the layout of the road should, would be the, the town property, that's your decision, your call.
Well, I took a ride up there and I took some measurements myself, sir, of the buffer zone between the, the berm and the sidewalk, okay, and, and, uh, last meeting, we just told G. Lopes that he had to have a two foot wide grass between the, the berm and the sidewalk. And I looked at your berm, or, or the grass area between the road and the sidewalk, and some of it does go to two feet, some goes a little more, but then it narrows down to a foot in some areas, and, and one area especially going toward the drainage at the end of the road. So that's really, it, it's, when you're plowing these streets and you gotta plow three feet of snow onto fourteen inches of dirt, it's all gonna go on the sidewalk, the roads are already very narrow there. So where is all this snow gonna go, and how are the kids in that neighborhood supposed to travel in the street that's already eight feet narrower than our standard streets? Um, I have some serious concerns, myself.
This is, this is a road that was, uh, built and approved as it wa, as it is, and everything in it that's built in it is, is already there. When we took it over and when the zoning board of appeals approved the subdivision, so, um, there is, I mean, there is not much.
It did say in the decision letter that, that subdivision, that street would never, the word never was in there, be accepted as a town road forever.
Forever remain private is the.
Right.
You do know that that was amended, though, that was changed.
And you changed it to say?
That it could become a public way.
That it could be.
That it could be, so that condition, remove that, that specific condition, so as the, getting to the sidewalks, like other forty B projects, and I assume other developments, but with the forty B projects, it's the homeowners that are gonna be paying for the sidewalks to be cleaned, it's not gonna be the town. So if the town pushes the snow onto the sidewalks, they.
They have no choice but to push the snow on the sidewalk.
Right, but they're the ones that are gonna be responsible, and I know that the town monitors that, because we've built some of the forty Bs that have been follow through on that, that then clear the, the sidewalks for the kids, for school, to go into the school bus area, so, uh, it's going to the homeowners association, but it's the road, it's the pavement and what's under the pavement that is being asked of you to recommend, not recommend, but to allow the voters of this town to decide whether or not this, this should be a, a public way. This is a forty B that I, by the way, I'm Ken Bichico.
You know.
I was the former chairman, you know, but not everybody else, but I'm the former chairman of the zoning board of appeals, and I was the point, point person for this forty B before, uh, Bishop, uh, was in charge of this forty B. Before he got the forty B, it was a forty-five units, we reduced it to thirty-three, when it was forty-five, we felt that the homeowners should pay for the, for the road themselves. If, some of you may remember, but a couple of years ago, we had a joint meeting of the planning board, the zoning board, the board of selectmen, Jim Agia.
I was here.
Yes, that's what I meant, with some of you might remember, uh, but at that meeting, we discussed forty Bs and developments, and it was a consensus and agreement that these should not be private ways, these should be public roads. And the reasoning behind that, and I wasn't necessarily in favor of it at that time, but I have since come to that conclusion that it's correct, that these people here are taxpayers, as well as paying a homeless association. So what they would, what was happening was, they were getting paid tax basically twice to maintain that road, they were paying taxes like we all pay taxes. And then in addition to that, they have to pay homeless association fee. No, they're gonna pay that fee anyway, but it's gonna be less. They're gonna pay for the other sidewalks clean, they're gonna pay to maintain the detention ponds, to clean that up, and they're gonna maintain if you wanna put shrubs along the roadway or plants or whatever. But they, as taxpayers, they shouldn't have to pay twice to have that road cleared, cleared of snow, or pay homeless association fees and, no, and buy roads themselves, pay for that, and then in addition, pay, pay taxes. So I'm asking.
You know, I'd like to say, you know, buyer beware. I mean, there are other homeowners associations in town too. When people buy these homes with homeowners associations, they know what they're buying.
I get all of that.
Okay, I don't think you get it, Ken.
No, I do get it, because the right thing is, for the town to decide, the right thing is.
Point of clarification, if you don't mind, please. I just wanna remind the board, and just, just to clarify the fact that nine of the homes are forty B homes. The rest of us pay market, have paid market value for our presidents. So that means that we're all, I mean, every single home in there is contributing to the tax base. But I find, as a market rate paying individual, we keep referencing it as a forty B, it's not all forty B.
The subdivision is a forty B, so, you know.
I understand that, but this, please be fair in line, that some of us have paid market value for the homes as well.
Oh, I understand.
That, that's all, it's just, so it's a mixed, can we, can we refer to it as mixed residential, if, if possible, because that's truly what it really is.
But you did know, you were aware.
I did not, sir, when, as a matter of fact, when I went to an open house, we were told that the road be accepted by the town, once, once it was completed. That's what, that's the impression that myself and my husband were under when we purchased Holly Inn in January of two thousand sixteen, sixteen?
So that being the case, you were misled.
Correct, sir.
Can I continue then?
Please do, before anyone else, else comments.
So, I get it, they were all informed that they're gonna pay, or most of them were informed that they're gonna have to pay to have the road plowed themselves. But the right thing to do, the right thing for the board to do is to realize that they pay homeless association fees, and they pay taxes. And why would we ask them to pay to have the road plowed, when I live on Milk Street, and my road's gonna be plowed? This is, I, I've been on this road, it's in, it's, what, maybe ten years old now? It's in very good shape now. You said you went down the road, it's a.
I've been there several times.
I didn't see any potholes, any cracks in the pavement.
Keep it tight, Ken.
My streets, well, no, I get that, yeah, look at my street, no, but, but that's.
Well, we pay over quarter million dollars in taxes.
When you say we accept it, we, we accept it, because we're, we're taxpayers.
I pay taxes, too, we help, and I have a vote.
That's our point.
Order, hold on. Mr. Pacheco, please continue.
So now I'll put my selectman hat on. Board of selectmen, you have a, a letter, I believe, recommending to the planning board that they accept this as a public way. So we're asking that you accept it as public. Let the, let the boards at the special town meeting is in October, vote whether or not this, they want this to be a public way.
I've never seen the board of selectmen send a planning board or any other board a letter like that.
You know what, sometimes we can be proactive, and we did that, so.
Chairman. Just a point of clarification. Are you, Ken, are you saying right now that the agreement says that the residents will clear the sidewalks? And is that what the homeowners agreement says now, that the residents will clear the sidewalks, and town will clear the?
I know that when it came before the board, we talked about the pavement of the road, nothing to do with the sidewalks.
I know that other forty Bs, and you can maybe clarify that with us, because you're familiar with the homeless association.
The homeless association does not ponder, does not say, or the, actually, and, the homeowner does not say that the, the town will accept the road. The homeowners association says that any common ownership, commonly owned property is maintained by the homeowners association. Doesn't say, doesn't, didn't ponder whether or not, it cannot predict that this board's gonna accept the road or not. So it just says, if, 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 if the town accepts a road that becomes less common property that's owned by the homeowners association.
So if the town accepts a roadway, they're cleaning the sidewalks and the road?
Per, if, no.
The sidewalks is in the right of way.
The, the sidewalks is, is in the right of way.
Yeah, right. So you're saying, if they accept the roadway, it's on town property, then they, they have to be responsible?
No, what I'm saying is, anything that's owned by the homeowners association, any property that's owned by the homeowners association, will be maintained by the homeowners association.
Sure. So if the town accepts the roadway, it's not within?
It's not, it's not owned by the homeowners association, therefore.
They're not gonna maintain.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Ferry, if you could clarify for me, the town-owned roads that have sidewalks, do you clear the sidewalks?
No.
Okay, so it doesn't matter.
No, I clean.
That is fine.
I didn't think so.
But, the thing is, I, there was some cracking of the pavement out there, Tom, and, and some other minor issues with the roadway. And typically, a town doesn't accept it until that's addressed.
So the final inspection from the engineer, I, I don't know what your inspection is, have, have you been asked to do the final inspection yet?
Yes, I have, a couple of times, and I've made these reports to the ZBA.
That right there is only about fourteen inches. Okay, where is all, where is all the snow gonna go?
Where's it going, any other road? You guys, I, I happen to remember Sylvia White, and I happen to be one of the homeowners that has this sidewalk in front of him, I'm in the middle circle, if you will. And virtually, everyone in our development, being good neighbors, we all generally do our best to clear the snow off our sidewalk, so the kids can walk to school, and not have to worry about being in the road. And if you've been in the development, as you said you have, very people are very respectful about the drug, uh, speed limit in there too, so they do drive slow. But the majority of us, I mean, I, I moved here two years ago from the city of Bataque. How many times I went outside and plowed and shoveled my street sidewalk, sidewalk after the plow king? That's what happens. I don't know any road where a street plow comes down and doesn't put the snow back on the sidewalk. If you're a good homeowner, you're gonna clear that sidewalk off so the kids can walk, and that's what we're gonna do. I'd also like to mention that, as a resident of Sylvia Way, I have over, it's not official, over a hundred and ten signatures, asking the town board to please put this up to a vote, to approve.
Before we go any further, Kerry, could you explain to everyone the process by which a road is approved for public use? In other words, what this board does has what impact? If we, we vote to recommend to the town, what we, we vote to not recommend, and then what happens?
And then what happens? Well, if we, typically, if the planning board votes to recommend, then we place it on the warrant for a town meeting, special or annual.
Or regular.
Then you go to town meeting, set up for a vote, moderator asks, always asks, the planning board's opinion, whether they recommend or not recommend. Planning board issues their recommendation. If the town, if the planning board does not recommend, then it's brought forth by the townspeople by a petition. Special is two hundred signatures, annual is one hundred signatures. But still, the moderator will stand up and ask the planning board their recommendation. And if they do not recommend, typically, they give their report as to why they don't recommend. And I'm assuming in this instance, if they, they were to go with that, and it seems to be that the town, the road's not finished yet. So, and then the townspeople that are voting takes that into consideration, and then they take, render their vote.
So basically, if we, if we rec, if we vote to recommend, it's still not a public road, it goes before the, it goes before the, the town meeting.
That's what we recommend, that's what we're thinking of.
But if we vote not to, then you already have the, the names on the, on the petition to recommend, so. Need two hundred for a special.
Can we please know it's on a punch list that needs to be rectified, really, as possible, 'cause I'm working to use as to what's not.
I would. I don't have a copy, I'm sorry, I didn't bring, I didn't get chance.
Why won't we talk about the punch list before this meeting?
'Cause it's been submitted to the ZBA, and that's been an ongoing process with the developer and the ZBA. They asked us to do reports, and we, we submit them to, to the ZBA.
Knowing that it should've been done before this meeting, is what you're saying.
Well, I, well, I was a little bit surprised when this, this came up, because I knew all these items were outstanding, so I was a little, you know, cut off guard.
I, just for the record, I, I always thought that adding a bond takes care of, and this is, this is what the.
Well, you can see the legal conflict of.
Actually, I don't, because, because anything, any of, any of the punch list items are outside of that, what we're talking about. So I don't see the legal conflict, every single.
Some of them, you actually have some private walls in the, within the right of way, I mean, that's some of the.
So, so are you saying we should remove the walls?
That would have to be, we could work that out with the ZBA, or the town.
Well, we worked it out with the ZBA.
But those things should be, you know, straightened out before we make that last step.
So, my recommendation, or my opinion, I should say, is that I would like to recommend, as a member of this board, that we put it on the warrant, but I would also feel very uncomfortable making that, that vote based on incomplete items, even if they're minor. If they were all done, I would, I personally, as a member of this board, would have no reason to, to not recommend it. You all pay taxes, I agree with you, you would, for the most part. But I think in this case, so that we come to a more fair conclusion, it would be best to continue this, this hearing until such time as all the items on the punch list are com, complete. I don't know if it's gonna take a month, two weeks, two months, but that's what I think. Sir.
Can we ask, are those gonna be completed? For instance, the sidewalk, I don't get what it's called, a bomb.
No, that cannot be changed.
So that's not gonna be changed, so even if we come back at that point in time, then it's, we're swayed.
If I can say, Chairman, if I can say, that is not on the punch list, the, 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 the roadway doesn't have to meet, well, the wa, roadway was not required to meet subdivision requirements.
It's not gonna be made fifty feet, that's not on the punch.
And it's not gonna have that, it's not gonna have that two-foot separation, I, I think, in that, in that.
So then my understanding is that everything that is on the punch list or the road has already been completed? It's things that are outside of that, that have not been completed.
No, 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 the punch list, there's, there's a, there's a punch list leftover that has to be taken care of.
So what's, before the.
I, 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 can I, can I ask for, I'm, I live in Waterford Circle in Stony Ridge next door, and ultimately, we're gonna be facing the same, exact same issue. I'm sure we're down the road, you guys will hear from us in six months to here, but having said that, if the punch list isn't complete yet, I have two different questions. One is the, and you can address them after, after I ask them, I guess. You're talking about some of the punch lists concerning the drainage, and the drainage dishes, ditches versus what's under the street. So if there were a problem with the drainage dishes and pipes connected to the street, at the point of under the sidewalk, toward the roadway, and those connections, who bears that responsibility at this point? That's the first question, because that affects your decision. Second question, too, is, if there's still a punch list out there, if the homeowners association has quote, assumed responsibility for the development so far, versus the developer continuing to accept responsibility, who is responsible for the punch list? Can the developer say he's no longer responsible, or is, or should the homeowners association not have even been formed yet because the developer didn't finish his responsibility?
Can I, can I invest?
Please do.
Regarding Pines, we've held, we've asked, and we've received thirty-seven thousand dollars from the developer because there was a punch list. Nothing to do with the road, or as we pointed out, the detention ponds or whatever. And there's an agreement that we're gonna hang on to that money, after he's completed the project, the ZBA has approved it, we hang on to that money for an additional year, and we can spend it on any of those, there's any of the concerns that the homeowners have, the detention ponds aren't, or whatever. But as far as the road itself, the road is complete. So if you recommend to the townspeople that they approve this as a public way, the road is complete. If there's stuff on the punch list that Mr. Williams talked about, we've got thirty-seven, the ZBA has thirty-seven thousand dollars, and that's the cost.
That was my recommendation.
Right, and that's the estimated cost to complete these, the punch list. So we hold on to that money, and we're gonna hold on to it, after he's done everything, we're still gonna hold on to that thirty-seven thousand dollars in case there's something else that comes up. He can't, he can't walk away from this project without going through that punch list. But we're still gonna, the ZBA is gonna hang on to that thirty-seven thousand dollars for a year, if there's any additional problems, so that homeowners don't get stuck with.
And half of the punch list items have been done already.
So the punch list items that I'm interested in specifically are related to the road.
There's some cracking in the road, that I observed, in the area.
Well, that's, that's.
I'm pretty sure that I.
That was never.
Yeah, I want, I want to know where.
This, this road has been in existence for ten years, because I've never gone back. Are there roads in Dyden that are ten years or older that currently have cracks that don't get plowed?
Oh, yeah.
Or, or rather, do get plowed, like Pine Street?
Pine Street.
The, the process generally in, in, in development, whether it's subdivision or chapter forty B, the project is finished. Any deficiencies are taken care of, and then it's accepted by, you know, the ZBA or the planning board. And I guess the person that would be stuck with any of these repairs, if it's accepted by the town, would be the highway department. Now, it's probably not a, a large item. I, I just would recommend to the board that I would think that they want some legal clarification on how that would work if the roadway is, is accepted, having the original developer take care of these problems. It may not be a problem, I don't know, it's not something that I've run into before. I mean, you could recommend, you know, going forward with this, and then seek that legal advice, and then bring it up at town meeting or something like that, if it, if it, if it is a real issue.
This crack pavement was not on the.
I believe it isn't the latest one. There was some mi, it's minor, it's minor, it's not a big thing. But there's a number of things.
I, I honestly, I'm with you, I honestly don't remember seeing, I drove it today, I didn't walk it, so I didn't, I didn't see any cracks myself. People live there, may know about the cracks, I don't know.
We walk, we learn it all the time.
But we can make it.
So do other people in the town, I mean, it's a really nice area, I, I don't wanna say a bad road, but a cracked road, and people don't like to go on that road. So they come on ours, 'cause it's nice. And so, we're not only saying, you know, help us plow the road, but there are other Dyden residents outside of us that use it. And so that's all I have to say. Mr. Woods, could you clarify for me, when you said schoolchildren and snow, is that simply directed towards the sidewalks? Or did that have to do with walking in the road as well?
Well, no, walking in the road, like, let's say we get a major snowstorm, two, three feet of snow, and they push, it's gonna end up on your sidewalks. So now, any children or yourself or any resident have nowhere else to walk but in the road, and the road is already built, I think, eight feet narrower than our standard roads. So, you know, if you get two cars going in different directions, it could be dangerous for young children in the street, you know, you know. I'm just talking about public safety, and I, planning board.
That to be rectified, to go into our transportation, like other subdivisions get in the town, I mean, I'm not gonna go into.
Nobody else has narrow roads like you.
Well, I just like to say.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to continue, to continue this hearing.
I have some questions.
Until, what's that?
I, if I could just continue my point.
Sure.
So, as part of the subdivision, there's a lot of children, so I do understand your concern.
Right.
I just have trouble understanding why the town doesn't wanna resp, take on that responsibility and leave it up to the homeowners association, where we are working with a certain budget. And we are gonna have to plow the roads anyway, so the children are gonna have to walk the road, whether we plow it or they don't plow it. And I'd much rather have the town plow it, you know, plow it, based on the fact where I think there's a more, much more, higher confidence level to that versus digging in our own pockets and coming up and maybe getting, you know, a very cheap service. So I just wanted to address your point.
Right, my, my main concern is safety for the children and the residents, that's my main concern.
And I think having it by the town raises that safety.
I have a follow-up with that. What do the students going to school on roads that don't have sidewalks do?
Those are not the ones that we are addressing here today.
No, I'm just curious.
No, that has nothing to do with the, what was done twenty, forty years ago, it doesn't have anything to do with it now.
They stand outside their, their front yard, and the bus comes, every single.
And the roads are wider.
That's why I'm at, well, Pine Street, whenever I drive down Pine Street, for example, I mean, the road is in terrible condition. And I feel like I'm gonna drive off the road every time cars are trying to pass, 'cause everybody's trying to miss all those potholes. So, I mean, even if the road's a little wider, I mean.
We have road troubles all over, it's his fault, Tom Ferry. I, I would like to say that I would like to see an as-built plan of this subdivision submitted to the board.
It has been submitted.
Before, has been submitted, with all, but the, things weren't all done.
Isn't that, isn't that right there?
Everything, everything except the punch.
Isn't that it right there?
That's, that's the Miler.
By the way, the fire department chief has signed off on this, and the highway department chief said that the road was in progress. At the last meeting, it was that. And I was looking at it early, and it was hard, it's, it's, it's on, the fire, the fire chief was, was fine with going down on the road.
See, we contacted the zoning board, highway department, and the police department, police department, then we spawned, highway department did respond in favor of it, and the fire department was in favor of it, and the fire department, and we made it a condition that there be no parking on the street, overnight parking on the street.
An as-built plan should have all the water lines and drainage lines into it, that does not. You do have it, did you submit it?
Yeah.
It's not there.
Is that something I should suggest to the board? We're doing it to that thing, the warrant could read that, you know.
I, I do have.
That's actually what you gave me there.
You know? I don't know what that means.
This is, this is for, it's called the road acceptance plan, we'll, we'll give you the, the rest of the.
I'm more concerned about, and for any future development that you may be coming before us, I would like to see the water lines, the gas lines, the drainage lines, all in. the gas lines, the drainage lines, all in that road, because we have rules on how far they should be away.
That has been submitted.
That's beyond the scope of this meeting though, right now.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to continue this hearing until we hear back from the developer and all the issues are straightened out on the board.
I second it.
On a bear?
Discussion.
A discussion, okay.
Could I have half of those questions here, more or less? Um, what about the catch basins?
Who's gonna mean?
Are we gonna, so according to the new, uh, agreement, catch basins are the responsibility of the HOA, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So if I have this, the only thing we're gonna be responsible for is plowing the roads and trash pickup.
That's correct.
Which by the way, we've been doing trash pickup since day one. That was supposed to be the responsibility of the HOA. Uh, so we have given something to the residents on Sylvia Way. May I ask what the fee is, uh, homeowners' fee?
Right now, it's twenty nine, twenty five dollars a month.
Twenty five a month, so I'm going, what, three hundred a year?
Three hundred a year. And they're spending three hundred.
How, how is that fee determined?
But based on the budget that the, uh, that the association has, based on its responsibility and the budget. And, and in some years like last year, the snow, uh, plowing was particularly heavy on, on, uh, it took out more than the, what's budgeted, but we had surplus from the year before that covered it.
Now, do you have, like, do you estimate so much for trash removal, so much for snow removal, so much for?
We estimate, we estimate for all the, the responsibilities of the HOA.
So it's broken down so much?
Yes. Yes.
So what is your plan for reducing the HOA fee if we accept some of these responsibilities?
That's up to the trustees of the association to decide.
Well, if, I feel if, you're asking us to do something because you're paying taxes and an HOA fee. And I'm offering an alternative. If we accept it, then the HOA, HOA fee should come down, I would expect.
Of course it would.
Yeah, but it's the, it's the trustees and the voting members, the home association, homeowners association, that determine what the fee is. So once they realize that their expenses are a little less than on plowing the roads, they're gonna reduce, I'm sure they're gonna reduce the fees to everybody. Why, why would they keep it high? If they wanna keep it high, it's their call because.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, that's.
We're on the board.
That's exactly how it goes.
He can determine it now.
Because if we're going to.
Can I ask for a question, since I'm one of the trustees?
Okay, that's good.
And myself and, and Bob Dole. So we just came on board about two weeks ago. While we look, as we're getting a handle on the budget, of course, if we can lower it, we will. But at the same time, being a very new, uh, development, we also have to plan and build up some of that, because we have a, a shelter for the kids to stand out, wait for the school. And we have other things to take care of with the gardening and such. So we would look at that, and obviously, we would have a meeting, talk to all, all the homeowners before we decide whether we wanna lower that or not.
And whatever the, the trustees decide, the homeowners will vote on.
And we'd all vote.
Can I ask for a clarification? You, the question you asked the developer was what, who would be responsible for what? And the developer said that under this agreement, if the town took it over, the town would be responsible for plowing, and the culverts would be the responsibility of the HOA. So my question is, if something happens in that street, if, if the street needs to be dug up for any reason, does it then become the responsibility of the HOA for a special assessment to take care of that? Or is that something the town would be assuming, based on what you just said about who's responsible for what? I'm asking the developer.
No, the, if, if anything happens under the pavement, the property's own, the property that the pavement is located on is owned by the town. Anything that happens under that is the responsibility of the town.
Is that your assumption?
Yes, it's my assumption.
Is that the board's assumption?
That's my assumption. So you ask me, I give you, I give you mine, but I.
Right, I'm asking the board if that's their assumption.
Your mind, go ahead, please ask.
Well, my understanding for the, I have a copy of the new agreement also, and basically, that's what it says, that, and I'll read you G, which is the roadways, unless and until the roadways have been accepted by the town of Dyton as public ways. And I had read somewhere here, oh, here it is, some water management system. Except that if the roadways have been accepted by the town of Dyton as public ways, the portions of this system directly below the pavement on Sylvia Way shall no longer be the responsibility of the homeowners association to operate or maintain. So it, it becomes the town's responsibility, anything under the road.
Makes a big difference.
Yeah, it's the drainage, the pipes, the drainage. So basically, where the drain pipe enters the detention basin lot.
Correct.
That part is the responsibility of the HOA. HOA, which.
So we had a motion, and a second.
So we had a motion to continue and a second. And the continuance is until when?
Kerry just stepped out.
Can you motion, can I, can I one of you to reflect the date and the work completed? If the motion is for the work to be completed, can one of you amend the motion, amend the motion for the work to be completed by a certain date instead of just going on for six months?
Typically, typically, we ask the developer when he expects the.
Okay, the problem is, the punch list, a punch list item that, items that Mr. Williams was referring to includes the sidewalk and the distance of it. So that is nothing I can do about. Anything that I can do something about will be done in the next three weeks.
So then it makes sense to continue it for one month.
So would that be?
Yeah.
May I ask a question of Ken? Would, would that be?
It won't be, won't be able to go on the special town meeting at that point. Because they gotta be in by, uh, September nineteenth, I believe, any articles.
That's our next meeting.
Right. So I think your main concern is the, is the cracks. Are you able to fix those cracks before the special?
That's a concern, of course I can, I can fix that tomorrow or the next couple of months.
I mean, if that's your main concern, make a conditional.
Honestly, you don't know where they are.
No.
Go with the highway department, you know, have the highway department go with you.
You're pushing off a lot for this, Ken.
Well, it's fairness to the taxpayers.
But you wanna be reelected.
It's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna nothing to do with that. I don't worry about the next election, I'm worried about what my job is right now, okay? Are you worried about your next election?
No, I'm not.
Yeah, this is five years away, huh?
Right.
Ken, you got my vote?
Yep.
There we go.
It's nothing to do with the election, so let's just, you can continue.
I think we should continue to the next meeting.
That's what, that's what I meant by continue.
The next meeting is the whatteenth?
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth, and you have to have that decision by the nineteenth.
It can still go on the warrant.
Nineteenth is the last day. The selectmen are gonna be until the twenty sixth to approve any articles. We're meeting on the twelfth, we may have to have a special meeting possibly, I guess. I would have to keep it down, obviously. We, you're not gonna have it done on the nineteenth and then have it all written up and then give it to us, and we're gonna be upstairs waiting for you to hand it to us, so. The, the punch list, the other stuff, we've got, ZVA has thirty seven thousand dollars to make sure that that gets completed. It's the road you're concerned about. Make a conditional, they fix, I haven't seen any cracks, but if there's cracks there, you know the highway department, they'll fix the cracks the next year, so make a conditional on those cracks, so.
Is it possible to have a punch list, if you don't want me asking, ZVA's public information, ZVA's homeowners that have done business with Stony Ridge homes?
Come to the planning board office, and it is publicly available.
No, it's not, it's, it's at the ZVA.
Oh, sorry, that's right, ZVA.
Okay, thank you.
I never crossed the way, I, I.
The old, yes, the old town hall.
So we have a, a motion to continue to the next meeting, but that is problematic. So we can rescind that motion and then just vote this up and down with the condition that the cracks be taken care of by the next meeting. And then we can write it up, and then we can all be in, on the same page. Or when we have this vote, because of the cracks and because of the uncertainty, the board may decide to vote it down, but at least we'll have, have had a vote. And then you'll have your, your, uh, petition, and you'll know how to proceed next. That, that's the way I see it.
That sounds good.
But first, we have to have a motion to rescind the motion to continue. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make it.
Motion wasn't passed, motion wasn't passed.
It wasn't passed, but it was still.
I think we still made a second one.
Just for record. Okay, so.
If he wants, if he so wants to withdraw.
Do you wanna withdraw the motion?
No, I don't.
Okay, then we will vote on it. All in favor? Opposed? No. So that, the vote to continue, since I'm the only one that said it verbally.
Bob didn't, that Bob didn't.
I did.
You did, okay, I just didn't hear you.
Now, what was?
The motion was to continue, it was voted on, and there were only two members that.
So a, so a yes vote.
Continue? I don't think they heard you.
No, now they don't wanna continue.
A yes vote would be to continue.
And a no vote would be to not continue.
I'll vote no.
Okay, so it is not, it is voted to be not continued.
Does that, does that mean?
That's good, that's good.
I think the vote to continue should come after the vote of whether.
No, 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 no. If we don't, if we voted and denied, there's no continue. If we vote to continue, then you can vote, then we vote it at the next meeting. We've denied the continuance, we are now going to vote on, if someone makes a motion, whether to recommend to the board of selectmen to accept the road as a public way. Would anyone like to make that?
Well, before we go there, you know, I just wanna make sure that we all know, okay, 'cause I'm gonna be on this planning board for the next five years. Every other housing association in town is gonna be coming to us for the same things, okay? And I think that we're making a snap decision here. I think I'm the only board member who's been out and looked at that. And all you're doing is listening to the residents, of course, and they have concerns. But we're getting pressured by the board of selectmen for this for some reason or another. Um, I think we need to go down there and have a look. Our engineer spoke against it. I went down and took pictures, and, and now you're being swayed, or we are being swayed. I think we're doing the town and the citizens and the children in that development an injustice.
The highway superintendent, I like it, the fire department side signed off on it, so you seem to be in the minority when it comes to some of the town officials.
Well, again, there are five of us that can vote on it, and we're not making a, whether it's snap judgment in favor or against, it's a judgment. So if, if, if the board agrees with, with your feelings, then perhaps we vote to deny. But it's a matter of putting it to the vote. But before we can vote, we have to have a motion. And the motion that I propose that someone make is that we accept the road as a public way on the condition that the cracks and the punch list items be acted upon by the next meeting. So would anyone like to second that motion?
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. But you have two weeks.
Could I offer, um, a suggestion? If one of our board members could be involved or at least receive emails to ensure that it is going on a timely schedule? And now, one of them has the bucket list items, or if it's just cracks, be involved, so that way we are aware of what's going on.
Again, you have to go to the ZVA for that, that's all for ZVA.
Can I also suggest that, that I get together with the, the highway superintendent, go over, review the punch list and see what items that, you know, we can address and how best to, how. It's, I, I would say yes. Is that okay, Tom?
More than happy.
All right.
Can I be a part of that?
I'd like to say so, please. Since everyone is here in your RNA forty B subdivision, the, and this has nothing to do with what we just discussed, but the affordable housing committee is looking for one large member for our affordable housing committee. So think about it.
Large by.
I'm already looking at.
You're already, you're already on board, so.
Yes, so that'll take your.
Okay, thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda?
We'll be back in two weeks, I don't miss.
Two weeks. Think so?
It will probably have to have.
Yeah.
Just wanna thank everybody for their time.
The other one? So we can answer that.
I have, I have an answer.
You have?
Yes.
I can't believe you're gonna accept this.
You get the, you get the road acceptance. Yeah, that's all.
Shit, yeah, the road acceptance.
We gotta make sure.
These changes to the sidewalks. Well, that's why you heard me say I live in Stony Ridge.
I put my house up and said I live in Spring, so I don't think I'm missing something.
You moving? It's gonna be.
We're in the market for those two people, seven thousand near dances. More than I know, I don't think so.
We're meeting with Tom.
I'm watching you.
Yeah, that was.
And I, I did come into it.
Are we ready for some?
Yes, are they out there waiting? Yes, bring them in, please.
I guess we're gonna have to get, get a bigger place.
This is, this is, you gotta read the.
I did, most of it.
Standard versus forty B, so, yeah, if it were, if it were standard, I mean.
If we're gonna approve that road, I'm gonna approve anything that comes before us.
It's your, it's your, you can rule it however you want.
We should not approve the road.
It's only, it's only.
And we're sure.
So at the town meeting, make sure you bring your passion.
Oh, yeah.
So would that take a two-thirds?
Okay, next order. Next item on the agenda is a special permit and site plan review for TJOS, TJ A Solar at Zero Brooks Street, map sixteen, lot twenty eight. I believe it's a public hearing announcement somewhere in our package. Okay, notice of public hearing, Dyton Planning Board, Town Hall, lower level, notice of public hearing, September fifth, twenty eighteen, at six forty-five. Apologies for the delay. Notice is hereby given. The planning board will conduct a public hearing on a special permit application and site plan review by TJOS, TJ A Solar to construct a plus-three megawatt, large-scale, round-mounted solar photovoltaic system at Zero Brooks Street, being shown as assessors map sixteen, lot twenty eight, pursuant to sections forty-six hundred and fifty-four hundred of the Town of Dyton zoning bylaws. Plans are available for inspection in the planning board office, nine seventy-nine, some set out, Dyton Masterly, normal business hours. Okay, so who is the petitioner?
No, he's not coming, he's coming in now.
Okay. Good evening, sir, we have opened the public hearing, so cheer up.
Alright, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Christopher King. I'm with Atlantic Design Engineers on behalf of TJA Solar. I'm here to present the project for the Brook Street Solar Project, located, it's listed at Zero Brook Street, but it's at the corner of Brook, Pine, and the Ogby Lane. Pursuant to these special permit, section forty-six-hundred, the site plan approval, we're here seeking a special permit and site plan approval for construction of the array. It's been, the site itself is roughly twenty acres, of which the solar array will comprise roughly ten acres of that twenty. We're currently before the Conservation Commission, we've had one hearing with them. They've hired their consultant to basically review the line. I'm not sure if that has happened yet, but it should be happening within the next couple of weeks, because we're scheduled to reappear before them on the twelfth. So with all that being said, conservation-related, the project itself, it's located in the RA District, so not only the bulk and dimensional requirements for the RA District, but also the requirements for the solar photovoltaic setbacks. The project has been designed in accordance with that. Flip this around. As depicted on the drawing, the site is currently in undeveloped land, on somewhat of a hillside. The larger, the resource areas, just real quickly, we have a larger BBW towards the rear of the property at the southern edge. We have a small, isolated area on the northwest corner, and then two intermittent streams, or drainage swales really, that run east and north, ultimately into Brook Street. We, our interconnection is off of, again, there's a utility pole out in the right-of-way, and in order to access the site, we're crossing one of the smaller intermittent streams, and we've provided a wetland crossing, due to the fact, in an effort to limit impacts. That's the old portion of the utility infrastructure that's proposed overhead in order to cross the wetland, other than that, everything else internal is run underground. The equipment pad is located towards the front of the property here, with a turnaround, gravel access turnaround as well. In order to mitigate stormwater, we have a larger basin at the front here, which will discharge into the existing swale system. And then towards the back, we have a long, shallow basin here, again, with a discharge, with a level spreader here, that goes back to the system located on the southern portion of the property. We are in receipt of a letter from GZA identifying design issues as they relate to various sections of the zoning bylaws. And so we are working to basically address the outstanding issues identified by GZA, as well as working with the.
In the August twenty second letter?
Yes, yes, yep. And a lot of those issues are stormwater-related. Again, we're also in receipt of a letter from the Board of Health from Todd, basically identifying the requirement to file for a stormwater permit, which we acknowledge, and we will be doing. One of the steps in any good stormwater design is the requirement for test pits, performing test pits in the areas where you're proposing the basins to ascertain the suitability of underlying soils. This project, again, it's, it's, it's pretty heavily wooded, particularly in the back, where the, where the basins are located. We have over ten projects currently with TJA, and a lot of them, just because they're not making any more open, developable land, a lot of them are forested. And so the municipalities have worked with us to, two-part, us to provide information, construction sequencing information, which would basically identify the means that we would go about performing the test pits at preliminary, very preliminary stages, really before construction begins. In this instance, understanding we still need a issuance of a stormwater permit prior to the start of construction. This is one of the things we'd be asking for the board to work with us on, is that on a review of the current regulations, there's nothing that would prohibit the planning board from rendering a decision without test pits. And we would ask that the test pit requirement be a condition of approval, hopefully, where we would be doing those prior to the issuance of the stormwater permit, which again is required prior to the start of construction. And the idea is that once, hopefully, we get planning and conservation approval, because we need to cross a wetland to get in to the site. So hopefully, we would have those approvals in place, which would allow us to cross the wetland, you know, the correct way, in a more permanent, with the construction of the three-sided box culvert, and then do very selective tree clearing, so we're not gonna impact the drainage or the runoff, selective tree clearing as required to get to the test pit locations. We perform the results, they're required to be witnessed by the Board of Health and our soil evaluator. We would do that, return the results to the Board of Health, the design engineers being us, figure out if any design modifications would need to be made, and those would be performed again prior to submitting for the stormwater permit. We're confident with some of the engineering approaches we've taken in designing this without the test pit information. And there, I'm not, I won't bore you with the technical details, but there's kind of a sec, order of parameters and criteria that we'll take into account when we're doing something like this without test, without test pit information. And we're confident that if there were any stormwater changes, that they would all take place within the footprint of what you see here. So the project wouldn't grow, per se, it would just be slightly augmenting the stormwater to satisfy the requirements of the Board of Health and the stormwater policy, of course. And I know there may be additional comments, but we are, I am privy to the Fire Chief's comments regarding access and maintaining the access road. And again, I'm gonna be working with him and confident that we're able to satisfy his requirements as far as safe emergency access ingress throughout the site. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. There's a lot more technical detail that was provided within the packets. I know that GZA has requested additional information regarding the specific installer and equipment-specific information, again, that we would offer, that that's typically identified during the procurement phase. Once things go up to bid and things start to get real, you start to get some of the project specifications. So, again, there are some items that we would be asking that will be provided, but hopefully not required as prior to the planning board rendering its decision. It would be prior to the issuance of rebuilding permit. Again, once we go through the procurement and, you know, construction bidding and estimating phase of the project. Similarly, the SWIP, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which is required by the PA for disturbances for a project this size. Again, that's something that historically, we've had a condition of approval to be provided once the site contractor is identified, and so the SWIP is really tailored to the site and the contractor. And that's, again, typically provided prior to the issuance of the building permit.
Any questions from the board?
Have you been in discussion with Todd about his comments?
Yes, yep, I've had a couple conversations with him. You know, he's highlighted some issues, again, which I think we can handle pretty easily technically. There are a couple issues that I still need to make sure we're on the same understanding as far as what he's looking for, primarily any potential impacts to the existing infrastructure in Brook Street, which again, we're confident based on the design and the fact that we're reducing the peak flows leaving the site, that we're able to address his comments. Again, the one, the one comment that we're asking for the board to work with us on is the requirement of test pits prior to the planning board approval. Again, we, we're going to do the test pits prior to the start of construction. We would just appreciate the ability to secure planning board approval prior to that, understanding the effort that it's going to take to get back in there and perform the test pits.
Between the GZA comments and Board of Health comments, and that of the Fire Department, there's approximately thirty-five items that need to be addressed.
Yes.
Now, the plan, as I see it, probably will change significantly to address the stormwater issues. You're dumping sixty thousand additional gallons into the neighbor, which is kind of unheard of. But I guess my bottom line is, with all those slings, somewhere around thirty-five, I don't see how we can make any kind of decision on this, on this plan at this time.
I, I would not argue, excuse me, I would not argue with you. I, I think that the plan is going to be revised. I certainly don't, I mean, it would be great, and my client would appreciate it if the board rendered a decision this evening, but I, I would agree with, with your stance in that there are revisions that need to take place to address the outstanding comments. You know, I'm confident that, based on my preliminary talks with the Fire Chief, Peter at GZA and Todd, that we're able to do so. Again, there'd just be some considerations that we would like the board to take into account, so that some of the issues, or some of the items that they're requesting, be provided as a condition of approval, to really, when it makes sense from a timing standpoint, a money standpoint, and just an exposure standpoint, if you will.
Yes, once we see how much you whittle it down, then we'll be able to make a decision.
Right, and if conservation's gonna let you corrupt that wetland, that's the key.
That's a big thing, too, and in the line, you know, as, there's no, wetlands, if it was an exact science, everyone would be doing it. It's subject to interpretation, there's a transition zone, and so we anticipate an adjustment here, there, in the line. And so we haven't gotten that read from the Conservation Bureau reviewer. So again, there are a lot, still a lot of moving parts. But again, the overall premise and concept of the design, I think, will still hold true. It may be whittled down, if you will, in some areas, to address some of the comments. But I, I think it's, it's relatively close, minus some technical issues, primarily, you know, hammering out some of the stormwater stuff. So again, there's just, there are some things from a timing and feasibility standpoint, again, that we would just ask, respectfully request that the board consider certain items be, if you get to that point, hopefully, a condition of approval to be provided, and, you know, ensuring that the town still has a mechanism for back, lack of a better term, to enforce that stuff, which, reading the bylaw and the different sections, and particularly the requirement for the stormwater permit, the teeth are certainly there for an added level of review and surety that, you know, no one is missing anything.
Chairman, may I make a few comments?
Sure, please do.
There are, a lot of these comments are, you know, technical or information to be provided to the board. Item, so I'm not gonna go through all of them. I think item five is the utility connection. Typically, your bylaw says that, you know, they should be above ground. This is a short distance, and in most cases, the utilities, you know, receiver, who they connect to, requires that the last couple poles are above ground. You've seen that on a lot of the solar projects. And basically, that's what we have here, so if you're okay with that, just to make sure, you know, that's one of the things that they'd have to have resolution on tonight. It's pretty minimal in this case, and if the board is okay with that, then allow them to at least get past that one point.
What's the distance between the two with them?
Oh, it's, well, it's not, it's a scale. Yeah, like eighty feet.
I think it's eighty feet.
Yeah, yeah, it's like, yeah. Yeah, yeah, a couple poles right there at the corner.
Okay.
Alright. The item seven is information to propose visual screening, so that should be, we can let the applicant address that in a bit. Item fifteen, which is the installation of a structure, drainage structure within town property, and what legal hurdles they'd have to, and what approvals, would that be through the highway department, or how they would have to acquire approval to do that? So that should be fleshed out also. And then there's basically a couple, twenty-one and twenty-two, do a lot with how the water's gonna be flowing off this site, how they calculate it, and I have some issues with that, so that, that definitely has to be addressed. And I would, I would concur with the, also concur with the Board of Health, you know, suggestions. The question I have, in the, in the Board of Health, do they, do they specifically require that the agent do the PERC test, or do the test pits? Because I think in the past, we have had, you know, test pits submitted, you know, standby at PE, and not done by the Board of Health agent.
When I talked with Todd, excuse me, when I talked with Todd over the phone, he was pretty specific, and his letter says that they shall be witnessed by the Board of Health agent. So he's not necessarily performing them, and he actually, for clarification, I asked him if he would be the sole witness, and he explained that it would be himself in conjunction with our soil evaluator, so it's almost two sets of eyes. That would be his comment.
Yeah, okay. I, I think that the information is, you know, is important to have for, because I think drainage is, is one of the primary issues here, so I think we'd have to make sure that we have that fully resigned before approving this project.
Not to interject, but when I spoke with Todd specifically about the test pits, he said, almost verbatim, he said, the, 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 the planning board wants to approve it without test pits, he's fine with that, but we're not gonna get a stormwater permit from him without the information being provided upfront. So again, it's, you know, it's, it's not as simple as financing, but it, it's a lot easier to make the commitment to get the heavy equipment and get the professionals and coordinate that effort once you have a sense the project at least has some positive momentum, if you will. You know, if, you know, the project certainly wouldn't die at that point. And again, there's enough flexib, flexibility internally, so that if we needed to make a design change, it would be pretty minor in nature. And again, the footprint, if you will, that the planning board would be reviewing, would not change, anything would be internal, and not expand upon the development that you see before you now. If anything, it might, it might shrink it a little.
When did Tom say he could be available for witnessing?
Todd said he had roughly a two-week backlog. And, you know, and he's, and just keyed me to the, the stormwater bylaws along, as well as the PERC test application. And so again, it's, especially on a site that's heavily forested, it's a pretty common practice for a municipality to understand the challenges and, you know, allow the applicant to perform those, you know, prior to the. and, you know, allow the applicant to perform those, you know, prior to the start of construction. I don't know if you've been out to the site, but if you stand in roughly the location of these basins and you try to envision getting the equipment to get in there and, and dig down, it's, it's gonna create, you know, enough of an effort where it would be a lot, it would be a lot more comfortable, knowing the amount of money and time that's spent to have some sort of, like I said, just some sort of positive momentum.
As a, another note, before construction begins, you would want your pilot agreement in place, I would assume?
Yes, all of that stuff is, is going to be provided prior to the issuance of the building permit. So if that's a, a condition of approval, that the board would feel appropriate, we're certainly amenable to requiring all of that.
Yeah, the pilot's up to Board of Selectmen anyway, and so, you're aware of the process. That's basically where I'm going with this.
Someone, someone in our, someone else in our office typically will spearhead that effort, but I am privy to that. That process is typically done and finalized prior to the start of construction so that everything is in place.
May I ask a question of the?
Please.
Madam Selectmen, so also has to go to town meeting approval, correct?
Yeah, I, I just wrote a question, what pilot agreement? No one has approached the Board of Selectmen on this. I think all of the town officials in this room understand the situation we have with two existing pilots that have not gone to town meeting because the developers have not brought an agreement to this town that is acceptable. So I have a question to Mr. King. If you don't get a pilot agreement, is this project out the window? Or is your client financially responsible enough to pay for it themselves without a pilot agreement?
I don't know the answer to that.
I think, quite frankly, again, the people, the officials in this town are aware of the situation with the two that we have. We have three submitted, only one's been approved. And in all honesty, before you start doing all of this work, developing a stormwater plan and everything, you better have the person who handles pilot agreements get in touch with the Board of Selectmen because with the problems we have with the two existing ones, and I will stake this publicly because everybody knows it, these two are actually up and running without approved pilot agreements, which means there is a conflict between the owner of the pilot, the facility, and the town, and the landowner. So, quite frankly, the expression at the time, because of the two we've had problems with that remain unapproved, coming into this town for a pilot agreement could be extremely difficult because of the problems and the feeling, in general, we will never do another pilot agreement. So, I think you need to get in touch with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Assessors because the Board of Assessors and the Board of Selectmen working together are involved with pilot agreements before it gets to the town meeting stage. And I can tell you that the Board of Assessors and the Board of Selectmen, at this point in time, have no intention of taking either of these pilot agreements that are out there hanging, and literally have been hanging for years, to town meeting until we get an acceptable pilot agreement. All right, very, very important.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
What's the advantages of having a pilot agreement?
Well, you can't answer that question.
I can't, I can't speak effectively to that.
I wasn't, I wasn't, I was on the Finance Committee when these came in. It allows the, I'll call the developer, the owner, to pay a, if you will, flat amount of taxes on the personal property for a period of time, let's say it's twenty years. Now, the town can, can also request, say, twenty-year agreement, a front-loaded agreement, which means the highest payments, instead of it being this way, it starts up here and goes this way, okay? The ones that were negotiated, both the one that got accepted and the two that haven't been, were this kind of a situation so that the developer-owner always knows what their taxes are gonna be for personal property. The problem came about when, with the two pilots that haven't been approved, the developer seemed to think that real estate taxes were included in that agreement. The town of Dayton has no agreement with the property owners on those two solar farms. Therefore, the town of Dayton, through its Board of Assessors, is sending the real estate taxes to the property owner and the personal property tax bills to the developer-owner. The hang-up is, those two agreements, the developer seems to think that in the amount of money that's in this level payment, are real estate taxes? Absolutely not. Evidently, the property owner, owners in two cases, were led to believe they weren't gonna be paying, if you will, the full freight on this property. Well, this property came out of chapter, so you know the taxes were low. It's now being taxed at the commercial rate. The bills for those properties, the full commercial bills, will hit in January because we've, after we set the tax rate for the shea.
Right.
They're in for a big shock. So the position of the town has been, because I'm the only Selectmen left, I wasn't there when they were agreed. I was there, got elected to bring these to the town, and you know I only brought one. And I'll explain that one in the, in the end here. I'm the one that is expected to get up at town meeting and explain why we should accept these. Without language that's agreeable to the town of Dayton relative to the personal property taxes, which are the only things covered in those agreements, there's no way that we plan to take this to town meeting. We've met several times with the developer and his counsel. We feel strongly, based on town counsel and the interpretation of the contract, that we are correct. That pilot agreement only, if you will, gives this tax rate, level funding, whatever you wanna call it.
Personal property.
Personal property tax, it does not include real estate. Now, the first one that got agreed and got voted at town meeting, that one also contained this language about real estate taxes. And the tax bill went out to the property owner, and the tax bill went out to the developer. And the representative for the developer came to meet with Board of Assessors, came to talk to us, to me, as, as the remaining Selectmen, and said that we had misinterpreted it, and we said, "No, we haven't. We will continue to send those bills, and we, the town, we fully intend to collect taxes for personal property and real estate at the commercial rate." The reason it got approved at town meeting is because the developer made an arrangement with the landowner to take care of those taxes. So we are collecting the appropriate taxes, and going forward, that's what we intend to do with the other two, if they come up again. I mean, you know, we've had town meetings go by, and we haven't been approached to put it back on. It's simple. Put the wording in there that we need to get it passed to protect the residents. So, sir, very, very important, before you talked about digging poles and drawing plans, if your client really needs a pilot agreement, the next step is you better get in touch with the Board of Selectmen. We need to show you what kind of an agreement will be acceptable for the town of Dayton.
Sure.
Right, so that's very important.
Okay.
And our special, would they have any help with getting it on the special, town meeting or?
What, in October?
Yeah.
No, no.
That would be the spring.
Oh, it would.
Who owns this property?
It's a trust, right?
Yes, trust.
Who is it?
Francis C. Crawford.
Todd Crawford.
Okay.
That's what the plant's, right.
No.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I forgot the button. It's a Manuel and Louise.
The developer, there were two of us involved. The developer is paying for the personal property, and we're collecting the commercial real estate taxes.
Directly to the owner.
But, but, well, we think it's, again, I would have to check with the assessors. I believe the developer is paying all the taxes. The bill goes to the property owner.
He just gives it to the developer.
But, the solution was, Mr. Developer, you will cover those taxes one way or another. And as long as that personal property and full commercial real estate taxes are being paid to the town of Dayton, we can get this approved. However, the personal, the property owner of real estate is totally responsible for those taxes.
Right, so the landowner needs to beware.
And that's what the problem was, yes, with the two that were holding.
Does this developer, will, will they be paying commercial tax?
No, wait a minute, the, we got two parties involved.
I don't think.
The pilot agreement is only with the developer, and that developer is responsible for personal property taxes on the array and whatever else peripherals. The tax bill will go from whatever's listed now to commercial property. It'll hit in January for the, for this fiscal year we're in. That's gonna go to the landowner.
Okay, that, for me, so that I acknowledge.
Yep.
Of when we approve this, because as far as I'm concerned, we are doing this what's best for the town.
Exactly.
And therefore, I need to know if these developers pay commercial tax on these solar arrays? Or is there a agreement made between the town and the developer as to what rate they will be paying?
The town and the developer have an agreement on a pilot, the pilot agreement. And in that pilot agreement, and again, it hasn't been negotiated, but depending on what happens, over a period, let's say it's twenty years, there's a certain amount of taxes that would be collected over twenty years. There is an option to front-load it and say, for the first ten, fifteen years, your rate's gonna be up here. And then, as you approach the twentieth year, it's gonna drop.
Lower.
But the total dollars, whether you go this way, straight across the board.
The same.
Exactly. Now, it's not a matter of commercial because it's personal property, and based on the value of the array and the peripherals and all that good stuff, the Board of Assessors will determine what the tax will be on that personal property.
Okay, that's, that's the.
And the Board of Assessors will determine the, the value or the taxable amount on the commercial property, which remains the property of the landowner.
That was the answer I was looking for.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of other questions that don't relate to this because I now know, we're talking about a pilot agreement, I got that question answered. I was just wondering, curiosity, what's the total square feet of panels, you know, in a array this big?
I, I don't have the actual square footage of panels calculated.
How, how big are the panels?
Sixteen rack, I think is eight feet by sixteen, maybe? I can do a quick, a rough quick count, give me one second. If you want, if you got another one while I work on this?
Yeah, the reason I ask that was because the town of Dayton established a, a methodology for permit fees. The permit fee is thirty-five cents per square foot of panel. So I just tell you that upfront, that's a huge array.
Thirty-five cents per square foot.
We're talking a lot of money.
The building permit.
You said thirty-five cents?
A square foot. Everyone, no matter who you are, if it's a small array or a gigantic array, it's thirty-five cents a square foot on the panels. That was established when the first one came along.
Again, but that's for the building permit.
That's for the permit, yes, okay.
Building or overall?
No, the building, not the permit application before us.
No, none of that. The permit that Janegia would issue is gonna be based on thirty-five cents a square foot.
Eight by sixteen? So I'm, I'm giving you a count right now.
What's the total wattage that this will generate?
Three point five megawatt.
Three point five, okay.
So one panel is roughly six by ten, so sixty square feet times.
Ten and six hundred.
Seven, six oh, right? Says here in the plan, eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Times six hundred square feet?
No, sixty.
Oh, sixty square feet, oh, okay. Another question is, the, and the Planning Board probably already has this, but since, I'm asking these questions right now as a Selectman. What's the value of the project? In other words, what's the estimated cost?
It's roughly two dollars a me, a megawatt, I mean, two dollars a watt. One and a half, one point five roughly, I'd say.
Is it?
While you're looking that up, Peter mentioned visual screening. One of the complaints I've heard about, both as a Selectman and when I was on the Board of Health, are these panels gonna be completely hidden from the road and all the neighbors because nobody wants to look at them?
That's the intent.
Well, there is a bylaw that says they're supposed to be, but I mean, we have several in town now that you can clearly see, even though the bylaw says we're not supposed to see them.
So that's what was referred to as visual screening, that, 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 okay. And, oh, my last question is, I think, I'm Chairman of the Stormwater Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Board of Health. So one of my questions, so my question is, you talked about those drainage basins and swales and all that existing? Some of it's existing?
Yes.
The basins that you're planning to construct, are they detention, retention, infiltration, or a combination of all of those?
They're detention basins. Right, currently, they're detention basins.
So, is the intent that they will not re, hold water for any length of time, they will drain? Or are they gonna have?
Yeah, we have, we have further policy, stormwater policy. We're required to demonstrate that they drain within seventy-two hours.
Okay, I, I wrote that policy, so, I just wanna know. Because going back when Mr. Piers was a Selectman with me previously, there were concerns from people in town about, obviously, standing water and mosquito problems. So, one of the things we talked about and that we incorporated in that stormwater, the regulations that go with the bylaw, were concerns about how fast this would drain because we don't wanna have to deal with standing water.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the board, or Peter, Carrie?
Well, I would suggest that he schedules some test pits depending on his client's confidence with moving forward the project. But I actually set up a date to do the test pits as soon as possible if we're gonna move forward with the project, knowing that this is, you know, this whole process may take a couple meetings.
I mean, and so, would it be correct, based on that, that the board is not willing to render a decision without test pits?
Well, I can have further discussions with Todd and see. But let's, let's think about that some more. I, I would not delay him till the end, if possible. Like, you know, the Conservation Commission may require him too under the, you know, under the stormwater regulations, you're supposed to have so many test pits per detention basin.
We, we, again, we acknowledge that, and, you know, I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but the, it's not, it's not uncommon, particularly with a heavy, heavily forested site where the basins are inaccessible without tree clearing, and in this case, you know, crossing over a wetland to allow us to, to, to perform the test pits after the approvals well in advance of construction so that. so that if there are any changes, it's time to implement them. And of course, if anything changed significantly, we'd be back before the planning board themselves to review the changes. Um, and, you know, the, the term SMART program is often mentioned in conjunction with a solar project like this, and the, um, um, the SMART program itself is anticipated to roll out within the next month. And there are a couple components as far as getting approved and in the queue, if you will, for the SMART program. Um, one of them is the interconnection agreement, the development impact study. And then, as important are the municipal approvals, whether that be planning board and/or CONCON where applicable. Um, and that is, um, when we first submitted the, um, application, you know, we, I, I had, I think I bugged Carrie pretty good as far as the timeframes and meeting dates and whatnot. Um, we're in a little bit of a race to, to secure our approvals. And so, um, the planning board's willingness to allow us to perform the test pits at a later date, allow us to, to secure planning approval, hopefully allow us to secure conservation approval. Um, that, um, secures our spot in the queue within the SMART program, allows the client and all the financial backers to, to realize that the project is real and that there are some minor technical issues that are eas- that are easily surmountable. And again, it's, um, out of the fifteen projects or so we're working on with TJA, ten of them are exactly like this with the municipality. Um, you know, we require, we've submitted a construction sequencing that details when the basins would be, when the test pits would be performed, how you get to the basins. Um, so with additional information, um, you know, the, the other boards have, have felt it within their purview to make that determination with a special condition of approval specific to the, uh, performing of the test pits. And, um, I would just ask that the Board.
Well, let, let, let me just say, I'll talk with Todd tomorrow and in light of the potential wetland impacts and everything.
Sure.
That's okay with the.
Yeah, please do, please do.
We'll discuss that.
In your conversation with the fire chief.
Yes.
Did he mention a twenty-foot road around the perimeter also, or just down the middle?
Uh, well, he just mentioned that we had talked about the situation he'd be looking for, and he wanted to make sure he could get a brush truck back there to fight any kind of fire. We talked about his, um, current, uh, re- hose length. He, um, we had decided two hundred feet. Um, so he had requested that I give him access with an adequate place to turn around that's within two hundred feet of the back of the project. Um, so I'm working on figuring out a way to, to basically get that in there.
Okay, now it's public comment time. If you would like to, to comment, please do. Just tell us your name and, and address.
Chico, eleven eleven Center Street in Dayton. Is this project, does it encroach on that, uh, lane that, there's a lane there was, one time called Audrey Lane? And the town discontinued it as a road or right-of-way. But does that project encroach on that right-of-way?
Is that, Joe, just to be clear, is that, like, if you extended Brook Street going?
Yes.
Okay. They're proposing to put a roadway, a, a culvert crossing within that? Otherwise, the, it's just the overhead wires are.
Yeah, but is the roadway, would that still be, be, if it encroaches on that land, that, uh, there's other land in there that's dead, you can't use it. It's landlocked, unless they stay off that right-of-way. I mean, you could put drainage or whatever, but if the developer wants to come in and put a road in and get it accepted by the town.
My understanding of when a road's abandoned, and we've gone through this before, that when the road is abandoned, and this one was in nineteen.
Yeah.
Seventy-three. Fifty percent of the goes to one side, fifty percent goes to the other side. Now, the layout of the road in that particular area, which is, is fifty feet. So, twenty-five feet goes to the Crawford's, which allows for twenty-foot access, minimum, because that's what fire department calls for.
Yeah, but then you're landlocked and the rest of the land. Reed Brothers, Patruch.
It's already landlocked. When the, when they abandoned that road and it fifty, one side went to one side, it's all landlocked.
A developer might be proposing now that, that road be open.
The point is that now they, that goes to them, the twenty-five feet.
I know.
Once it was abandoned, it goes to them, very.
Same thing, Stony Ridge owns part of, half of it and all that. But if you put a structure, you put something there, you've landlocked the rest of the land.
It's their, their land.
Uh, Chairman, I, I would just ask, maybe you request some legal, you know, uh, opinion on this? Because I think it may, it maybe need the approval of all the owners of the work within the right-of-way may require the approval of all owners of the property.
All owners, uh, no problem.
If it's abandoned, then each, you know, each owner, abutter, abutter owns half of it.
Where their, where their old frontage would be, yeah?
Yeah, I don't know if it's the whole way or part of the way. Because, you know, someone could do work in here and basically, as Joe says, landlock them. And then, you know, they had planned to access it or something, they used their, their portion of the right-of-way, and they wouldn't be able to. But I think the Board would wanna be perfectly clear on that.
Carrie, can you, uh, contact the council for that?
Don Curry's got a response to that.
Yeah, I, I recommend that you seek counsel on that. Uh, Mr. Pius is close, I don't believe it, you split the road in half. It reverts back to the original boundaries, so we don't know where. The town wouldn't make an opinion where the original boundary was. So I don't know where it was before Audrey Lane. So that could make a huge difference on what could happen with the project.
So in other words, the people on the north side of the, of the paper road could own the access that they are.
Yes.
That they are proposing, unless we get a legal determination of, of all that, okay?
Yeah, that does, I know we're talking feet, but.
Yeah, makes sense.
Going for you. And, uh, the other thing I'm not at liberty to discuss, because it's above me, is he mentioned that possibility of working on the town's structure. I believe it's the culvert to the east on Brook Street, is that what he's referring to?
No, he's putting in a new culvert, uh, basically right at the corner there, to get over the wetlands.
Correct, and, and the water is coming from two different directions, I'm not sure he shows that.
The wetlands comes from both two directions, he does show that.
Okay.
But the one going down the, the abandoned roadway, he's going, using a culvert to get over that wetland.
It's gonna become the town culvert?
But that's, that's, I don't know, I mean, that's the legal question. If the town doesn't, if this is abandoned, who does it, you know, who owns it? And who's gonna maintain it?
I see.
And who has the right to do it?
That's a very goo- good question. And at that point, if, I don't believe it'd be my office, I believe, well, maybe in conjunction with, I believe it would be the Board of Stuckman also.
Yeah.
On that.
Yeah.
Sir?
Uh, Mark Warner, eight eight seven Brook Street. I am the abutter immediately to the east of the proposed project. These folks are my neighbors, they're the abutters immediately to the north of the proposed project. We've been living here for decades. Uh, we chose the town, we chose that location because of its scenic beauty, the nature of the landscape and all of that. And this project is proposed to be located right next to us. So we're the ones that are the most directly and negatively impacted potentially by it. And we have some, some serious concerns about it. The, uh, stormwater runoff is certainly one of them. Uh, stormwater at that location is a very real problem, is quite a lot of it. Uh, additionally, we have concerns about the small buffers that are being proposed and the very close proximity of the equipment to our own homes and property lines. We have concerns about electromagnetic fields and other electrical fields that are present where high voltage exists. We've got concerns about noise that might be emitted by the, uh, the project's inverter, which is in very close proximity to the houses to the north. And if the Board should decide to grant approval to the project, we have additional concerns that we would voice at that time.
Okay, thanks. Sir?
I'd like to show you some of the pictures.
You are?
Alan Bosley, sixteen eighty Pine Street. I'm right at the corner there. These are some of the pictures of the water that comes down that path. That intermittent water that Mr. King referred to.
That's heading south.
I'm very familiar with the area.
So this is the old road?
Yeah. That's right alongside my house.
This is, uh.
The corner?
Yeah.
That comes out.
I don't need to see it.
Lauren Bosley.
I, I know.
This comes out of their property.
This comes out of the proposed.
One of them, and this is also coming out of their property.
The proposed.
Proposed, yes. This is, um, this. This is along Mox, this is the east side.
East side.
This water here meets up with that water and then goes under, down the street, down Brook Street, and then.
This is the side of the town, right?
This is coming from his, this is coming down, you know, Audrey Lane, this is coming down.
This is Brook Street, right?
Yes.
The guy goes right there, so you, so you're looking straight out to Brook Street.
Yep. And this comes over his land.
Look at that.
Conservation.
But this is coming from there. There are two spots that it comes, comes out of.
Naturally, I have a lot of concerns with this being in such close proximity to my home. I have read countless articles since this began, constantly reading, I need glasses now, I've read so much. Most solar companies, in an attempt to be a, a good neighbor, or they try and appease the abutters, they try and help them, we're through this stuff. Even some solar companies have decreased the size, instead of, say, a three point four megawatt, they, I've even read cases where they've dropped it to one point five megawatts, right? They've reduced them in such a way. It's a, it's a cash cow. It's like the construction boom in early two thousands. Solar companies, now, it's a cash cow. Many of them get bought up by investment firms, right? Some of them get flipped to other solar companies, at huge profits. And there's a huge profit monthly for these companies. I'd like to ask Mr. King, do you have any completed solar fields at this point? Completed?
Completed?
Yes.
Through TJA?
Yes, through TJA.
Yes.
And could I have a location app so I can go speak with the abutters or see what type of project you are doing?
Um, I don't know the exact address, but I.
If possible, I would like the locations of the ones that are completed, the locations of the ones you have under construction. One in West Bridgewater, which was on appeal by the abutters, was eventually taken over by another solar company, correct?
Uh, I don't know, I did not work on that project.
Well, I'm, I'm telling you, it, it was, it was taken over by another solar company. The, um, the problem that I have is the buffers that I see on all these other solar projects are, are huge compared to what is being put alongside our home. He's talking about twenty-five foot of buffer, right before the construction broke. A four month, at least four months of construction, right alongside our house. We've already dealt with the construction and our roads were broken from the forty B development that went up behind us. So it's not really what I intended on spending my retirement doing, listening to tractor trailer trucks. And plus the visual aspect, other companies will put screen in, they'll screen in their, uh, inverter station. They will move them deeper into their fields alongside other parts of the fields, so as not to disturb the abutters. It doesn't seem like it's a huge thing to ask.
You know, the.
One more thing, if, the type of, this would, I, I didn't understand it fully. If, in fact, the planning board does allow them to proceed without the test pits, right, being completed, what recourse does the planning board and the town have if it's not working out so good for them? Is there any, anything that would happen?
I believe if the, if they can't find suitable soil, then they can't get a suitable stormwater mitigation plan, which means they can't get a stormwater permit, which means that they would just be dead in the water.
Oh.
So to speak.
Okay, thank you.
There is no intent of allowing them go to construction until the test pits are provided and the design is confirmed. Okay. That, that was never, never under consideration.
Lauren Bosley, sixteen eighty Pine Street, I'm his wife. Could I just ask, what's the GZA?
That's his company.
That's my company, it's a company. I, I'm the consultant, I'm the consultant for the planning board that does the peer review for the projects.
Okay.
GZA is my company's name.
Okay, definitely confused on that. What I, one of the other concerns that I have here is, anything along our property, there's nothing in measurement. Nothing. He's got it for the five hundred and fifty foot to the south side, but there's nothing. And I can tell you why, because it's so close. From our property line.
You're on the north side?
We're on the north side, and just from our property line, not even saying if you had, you included the, um, Audrey Lane, the abandoned road. We're less than a hundred and twenty-five feet from that, um, inverter station, which lets off a lot of humming. Can you imagine? Just imagine if I put on a humming machine right now, and everything you do, you're gonna hear humming. That's just not even fair to living, to keep hearing humming all day long.
We've been living there forty years, forty years.
Now, would it be feasible to move that at the other corner?
Uh, uh, if, all right, so, just addressing some of the stuff that was just brought up. Noise, um, we, we can provide information that is specific to the transformer pads here at the, at the equipment pad. And it's basically a study that, um, calculates the emitted decibel level and then calculates it as you move away from the equipment. And so, uh, we can submit noise information that can demonstrate that at any property line, if you will, what the anticipated noise level is based on the equipment specs.
Well, when you're, when you're used to zero noise, any noise is gonna be annoying.
Sure, for me, that's understandable and, you know, I, you know, not to.
Why can't it go all back, sir?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask the same thing.
I mean, we have other solar farms where all their equipment's way out back, like way off the road. Way off the road.
Well, they have wetlands at the far end of the property, they're restricted by that.
Uh-huh.
And it doesn't, from a, from a oper- I mean,
from a noise generation standpoint, uh, we're certainly gonna locate it in a position that is not going to result in a noise impact at the property line. Um, and again, we can submit the information and sho- show the distances on the plan, and if we, if we run the calculations or, um, analyze that location and the, um, decibel level at that particular, the northerly property line is above what's acceptable, then we can certainly look at moving it, um, based on some preliminary information that I've been reviewing over the past week or so. Um, the distance that's provided now and when I, when we submit the calculations, well, it'll be a comparison. So, instead of just telling you that this location will produce forty decibels at the property line, that's, you know, forty decibels, it'll liken it to.
A conversation.
A conversation or something to that effect. Uh, based on where it is now, though, it's down around, I wanna say it's between thirty and forty decibels, which is a, a quiet summer night, it depend, it, the different literature likens it to a different situation, but, uh, it's fairly quiet. The screening, again, um, you know, there are a lot of distances being thrown out there. I would offer that. I would offer that, you know, the, the setbacks within the, the section forty-six hundred are, are there for a reason, and it's to, uh, protect against noise, um, potential site impacts, visual impacts, um, and with exception to the access road, which has to come in off of the northern, northerly, um, lot line, you know, all of our panels in the ra, the array itself, um, meet the setbacks specified within the bylaws now if, um, there's, you know, every site is different and, um, the by, the setbacks don't necessarily, it's not just a broad brush stroke for every site. Um, so if, you know, there are specific holes or are specific concerns, um, a- as people have noted, you know, other projects have implemented screening and we're certainly amenable to that, you know, we're, we're committed to working with not only the town but also the abutters, uh, you know, I don't, it's been my, um, history, you know, of doing this, um, uh, before, uh, in the public forum, you know, we're gonna please everybody. Um, so, you know, again, we're committed to working with the, uh, the intent and the, the rules and regulations set forth within the bylaw, but also, we'd like to think we go above and beyond and, um, try to work, uh, each site on a case-by-case basis. Um, you know, our intent is not to have this thing visible from the road or visible from the abutters' properties or, um, install a humming machine that's gonna drive someone crazy after six months. Um, you know, I think that the design you see before you, uh, certainly could, uh, take some tweaking to address some of the concerns raised this evening, uh, but I think it, it's close. And it's certainly close to, um, meeting the, the criteria set forth within the bylaw. Um, I, um, you know, there was some, you know, mention about, you know, the recourse, and I think it was accurately, um, um, commented that, you know, this doesn't give the developer carte blanche to just go out and start constructing this thing only to find out that the stormwater design won't work. Uh, that's, you know, that's not good engineering practices as far as Atlantic design's concerned, it's not good development practices, 'cause at the end of the day, it costs you way more money than it should from the get-go, 'cause then you're, you're, you're in a predicament where you need the work to get done and you're, you're, you know, held to the meat grinder by the contractor, 'cause he knows he's got you by the ankles, if you will. Um, and so, you know, the, the teeth and the mechanism is there for the town to, 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 you know, for the planning board to, if they, if they deem the project is in conformance of the bylaws, to approve it. Um, and then the stormwater permit, um, is an additional requirement and that's, you know, at the point in time where, you know, we're requesting the test pits be performed and it, certainly at a time that's prudent and would be, um, ample time to make any design changes. And again, with some of the engineering practices applied to this without test pits, um, and based on other projects where this same condition has, has existed and test pits were performed after planning approval and the assumptions held true, and there were very minor adjustments being required. Um, and not to be too unwid, but lastly, someone had said, you know, they went through their issues now, but if the planning board entertained approving it, that there would be another set of issues, and I would just offer in the interest of everyone's time and money and, um, that, you know, all the issues be put out to the forefront. If you want us to, um, address concerns, we need to know what those concerns are. Um, and we're, again, we're committed to working with everybody and trying to, um, address the outstanding issues, try to ensure that we're not negatively impacting the town from all of the standards set forth within the special permit criteria. And I think that this project, uh, considering some of the surrounding developments and what I've heard, the history and some of the detrimental impacts to the various, um, towns' resources and infrastructure, I think this project is far from that. I understand that there are abutters that are in the immediate vicinity of this project, uh, but I think that, um, the information out there and the diligence that was put into this design, um, assures that we're going to certainly work within the criteria set forth within the bylaw, but also, we do what we can to lessen the impacts to the maximum extent practical, understanding that at the end of the day, you can't make everybody happy.
What is the, he's set, uh, the buffer zone on the east side of that, uh, project?
Uh, sure, uh, this side here?
East, east.
East here?
Yes.
Uh, so currently, we have, to the panel, we have sixty-eight feet, um, to the fence line, it looks like we're a little over fifty feet, and we're, you know, keeping fifty feet of the existing trees that are...
But the detention basin there, what, how far are you, because that, that'll be...
This basin here?
No, it's not, uh, that one, yeah.
Alright, so the tree line sneaks in a little back here. And from the tree line to the property line, it's roughly thirty feet.
Okay. Don't we have a thing on our bylaws that you have to be fifty feet away?
Fifty feet, fifty feet is the, is the bylaw, and other developers have expanded that based on the, uh, the site conditions?
And public input, yeah.
And public input, yeah.
Sure, sure, and again, that, um, our, you know, when we do our kind of conceptual design and review the zoning and all that, our interpretation, specific to the fit, to the setbacks within the solar is, uh, was to the panels themselves. Um, and, you know, again, we try to, we try to, yeah, as most projects go, you start off with something this big, and once you get your wetland lines, your property survey and everything else, it shrinks. And at that point, your soft costs are already so much that you're committed at that point. There's so much time, effort and money put into it. Um, and so, we've shrunk this project, um, and it's all, you know, it's, there's only so much you could shrink a project. And so, you know, we've really focused on keeping the, the panels themselves outside of that setback, um, trying to really keep the fence and all of the activities outside of that. But there are instances where stormwater facilities, um, extend beyond that setback. But again, our interpretation was that setback wasn't applicable to stormwater facilities and understanding where the abutters are located, you know, certain areas are more sensitive than others. And so, based on the feedback received tonight, we can certainly, you know, again, there are going to be plan changes, we still need to confirm the wetland line, uh, we still need to address some of the stormwater stuff, address the fire chief stuff, and so, we can certainly look at doing our best to, um, play to those sensitive areas and see if there's anything that can be done to lessen, um, any kind of impacts, particularly for the abutters.
Okay, thanks. Sir?
Mark Corner, uh, I'm the one who made the remarks about additional concerns if the board did grant approval to the project. Those concerns have to do with the nuisance and difficulties that we will incur as direct abutters from the construction process. Since approval hasn't been granted, I didn't think it was the time to bring those concerns up yet, kind of putting, uh, the cart before the horse. But another, uh, comment I'd like to make, Mr. King, you said that it wasn't the project's intention to construct an array that would be visible from the road or visible to the abutters, and that it wasn't your intention to put a humming machine in close proximity to housing, but that's exactly what that design does. That design is gonna be very conspicuous and quite visible to the abutters and somewhat visible to the road, and that humming machine is only a few feet away from that residence directly to the north. So if it provides enough of a decibel level to be heard, it's gonna be a nuisance when it's twenty-four, seven, around the clock, hum, hum, hum.
Until we have numbers and, and, and studies, we're really just gonna be spinning our wheels. I don't disagree with you in the least, but on the other hand, I wanna get information and facts, not, I think it's gonna hum.
Sure.
That wasn't done, actually. So he said he didn't, what is the forest line to the, us, the abutters to the north? What, if you're saying we're not gonna see it, what is the forest line that's gonna stop it from us seeing it?
Is it forested now?
It, it's, there's forest there.
Spars.
And it's sparse, and in the wintertime, when the greenery goes away, then you'll see it.
Well, that's why we asked, that's why GZA's consulting, uh, peer review includes, uh, identifying...
But my, my point is, he's saying that, you know, they don't want to interfere with the abutters seeing it, well, that's why, we, we can't get any measurement. They didn't put measurement there, so we can't even see what it is that... But there's no measurement.
As far as...
As far as what your wooded area that's gonna be left, that's gonna, the forested area, on the northern side.
Sure.
On the north side, is there gonna be a buffer of trees there as well?
Yes.
All I see is a road.
Of, of what? Of how much?
Um, well, um, like, um, like I said, uh, based on the input tonight, I'm anticipating revising the plans to, um, s- to speak to particularly a bunch of different things, but one of which being the visual impact along the northern edge.
This thing is massive. As a whole, do we have anything bigger than this indictment?
Much bigger.
Where?
William Street.
On William Street.
William Street, the one that...
That was the pig farm.
Yeah. And you can see that from the road too, when you weren't supposed to, okay?
Right.
And then the developer promised us all these trees that was gonna block it, but that didn't block it either.
And, and that's my point.
You know, and I, I would like to say, we have other solar projects around town, and we've received all the same complaints, and we're still receiving complaints about water, about noise. Mr. Carr was constantly complaining to us about the access road, and they went by there a couple days ago. It is a mess. Okay, we got the other one on Main Street, where we have water runoff and they planted these bushes, and the bushes have died. They said they were gonna replace the bushes, we have not got, no new bushes. So almost every solar farm we have so far has become a headache.
And, and what about electromagnetic radiation? What releases electromagnetic radiation? Is it the panels? Is it the inverter? What releases the electromagnetic radiation?
If I knew that, man, I would be sitting here.
I wasn't asking you, really.
I'd be working for NASA.
Carries electricity.
Who would use that work?
Sorry.
So, there's a concern for that.
There is.
And the voltage. And what about radio waves? Mr. King, what about radio waves? You were asked that from the Conservation Commission to find out about radio waves.
I'm, I'm in the process of, um, of gathering information that's published by, um, the Massachusetts Department of Energy, um, that speaks to some of these issues, um, the, um, potential for any electromagnetic interference, um, I think was the question at Kong Kong, um, and does it interfere with, uh, radio communications?
What about appliances? My understanding is, is appliances can blow out.
Again, I don't, I, I'm in the process of gathering the information...
You should know this, this is your proposal.
Well, if he was just asked the question and it's never come up, it's understandable that he's finding out.
It's hard to think this hasn't come up.
It's never come up in, before this board, to my knowledge.
But we're glad you brought it up, man.
What about the Tesla? Tesla or GOS, I may be pronouncing it wrong, not Tesla, but what about GOS? Because I'm gonna tell you why. Because my husband has a stent, and he is prohibited for so much Tesla and, um, GOS, for him to be exposed to.
Can I make a suggestion that you may, or may do with what you please? I would love to get more information of what you're, you're pointing out, and any information that you can get to support your issues is gonna be very helpful to this board now and in the future.
The electromagnetic...
Certainly, Mr. King is going to provide us with information and, and it may or may not be in his best interest to provide it. And you may have information that, uh, again, if you can provide us with facts that support your, your concerns, it will be helpful to this board in terms of what we, uh, permit or don't.
I'm just saying, he, he does have the restrictions by his doctor. Um, MRIs are, are part of that, the Tesla, the magnetic, um, field, and there are restrictions with people who have, um, stents.
Hot trouble.
And hot trouble, and to add, that he has lyme disease and with hot trouble, it could lead to a pacemaker, which also is a problem. So if you have high voltage, if you have electromagnetic energy, if you have all that, that can be a health concern, and I don't know where this is. Like, that could be right at the corner, and you have grandchildren, and you, they're exposed to that, their, their bones are less dense than, um, a, uh, an adult's bones. So there's concerns about that. But, um, but yes, if you can find out about the Tesla and the GOS, and there's GOS meters that can test, can test what the reading is for the GOS. I guess I...
But please, if you, if you could provide us with any information about what you're describing, 'cause you're over my head at this point.
I...
I will add, add one thing, many realtors believe that being an immediate abut to a solar field is detrimental to your property value, right? Because young families are reluctant to move alongside of them, because they're too new. They don't know in fifteen, twenty years down the road from now, they're gonna develop something and say, oh, guess what? It was the solar project, it's a solar field, so property values, many realtors, they go down.
Well, there are many studies related to property values that, if you can provide us with information other than opinions, it would be very helpful.
Okay. We'll try that too.
They tried it, the last one too, sir. You know, the other residents came in when Berujo was putting in his solar bomber, but one of them is a friend of mine, and his property value definitely gonna go down, 'cause he's a direct abut. You know, and he has a beautiful home with a lot of land.
No, the property value doesn't go down, but the people that, that you would, um...
Yeah, be less interested in your property.
Less interested, exactly. The market isn't gonna be the same.
If I was a family, and, and that'd be in a nice place to live, if I was a young family, like we moved here as a young family, I would look at that property now and say, not with my kids. I'd move on.
But I, I plead that you don't, that we can come back, and if anything's changed, that we can voice opinions to any changes, and that, that we just see. I mean, we're voicing our opinion to this, but if there's changes and there's still concerns...
If I'm not mistaken...
And trust me, I will get you that information on.
This is one of the larger solar fields between Somerset, the Holworth, it is a very large field compared to some of the solar projects in other towns around us, so, it's substantial. And now what prevents the next property owner, Mr. Crawford, from doing the same thing? And then from the next property owner, right, from doing the same thing?
And then we're gonna sell the road.
Are we gonna have twenty watts, uh, twenty megawatts alongside of us? I mean, that's, at some point, the human body's gonna say, nah, that's a little too much.
This project is one of the smaller ones we currently have in TGA's portfolio, most of them run on average about five megawatts, um, and I think it, um, would be inappropriate to, um, to judge, to, to consider this project, assuming any kind of hypothetical build-out.
It's not a hypothetical, he's approached you about it.
But that, so...
This...
He has approached you about it, has...
Hold, hold, excuse me. This project will stand on its own or it will fail on its own, and it will not be, we won't consider what's happening five years down the road to the west, to the north, to the south or to the east. We will just consider it on its merits. And at this point, with over thirty-five, did you say, thirty-five items unaddressed, it's most appropriate that we continue it until at such time as you can whittle down this list. I don't know if it's gonna take till the next meeting, or a month from now, or six weeks from now? I don't know if it's going to take till the next meeting or a month from now or six weeks from now.
I was going to, my, I thought they were going to make the motion.
The whole one.
Okay.
But I, I just want to explain something to the residents. When we talked about a pilot agreement, if this company needs a pilot agreement in order to, I'll call it, be in the financial mix to build it, it has to come to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Assessors. If in fact, we negotiate an acceptable agreement, it's going to go to a town meeting vote. So you will have another shot at it. Even if every board has approved it and it's ready to go, it has to go to a town meeting vote. So, Mr. King, I just want to say to you, when you tell your employers that they need to contact the Board of Selectmen regarding the pilot agreement, the town of Dayton Board of Selectmen and Board of Assessors follow the letter of the regulation from the Department of Revenue because the other thing we ran into is we have two unapproved because we were told they don't need a town meeting vote. Absolutely in this town, they do. So they should not even come in with that argument. If this project does not need a pilot agreement, it will not go to town meeting. It's the local boards that will make determinations. So I just want you to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No.
Well, I'm going to motion to continue now.
Chairman, I would request, just to, so everybody's clear, that we have asked the consultant or I think the intent, we were asking the consultant to submit a list of information, which I think I've tried to keep track of during the hearing and that would be calculations on noise impacts and I would suggest that would be to the east and north. Locations of other solar projects constructed by the applicant. Information on legal right to install the culvert within the abandoned right of way. I think they should research that also. Information on radio, electric, magnetic, dalsian and telsa potential impacts.
Tesla.
Tesla, Tesla, okay, Tesla.
It's a car, right?
Like the car.
I was thinking of Tesla, one of the original. Impact to people with stents and if, information on potential impact on property values and buyer appeal. I don't know if there was any others.
And the visibility from the road or residents, two is also important.
Well, everything on the list is important to varying degrees, but the ones, the issues that were raised tonight with emphasis are probably more important. Not discounting anything else on the list because there's quite a lengthy list of, of issues.
And I think, you know.
Well, I was going to, I was going to move to continue to the second meeting, second Wednesday, third Wednesday. When do we meet?
Second.
No, the first.
First, Thursday. For the third Wednesday in October. That should be plenty of time for you to gather the information. I don't know what the date, what's the date?
That is, that's about six weeks from today.
Seventeenth, third Wednesday in October, seventeenth.
Motion to continue till October seventeenth.
I will second that motion.
Wait, 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 wait. Our applicant may be able to tighten up his schedule depending on.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to shoot to be a little bit more aggressive and potentially, what did you say? The first Wednesday?
The first or the third Wednesday in October.
Two, three, that'd be four weeks.
First is October third.
I mean, a lot of it is going to, I mean, I think a lot of these comments, understanding, I'm waiting for a conversation between yourself and Todd based on the test pits.
Todd did that this week.
But understanding that, I think all of the rest of this information could be provided in a timely manner so that we could reconvene on the first Wednesday of October. When would you, when do you, what would be a preferable resubmital deadline for the materials? One week, two weeks?
One week, we'll do that.
One week. Okay. Then I, if the board is amenable to that, I would like to do the first Wednesday in October.
I would amend my motion to first Wednesday. Now bear, bear in mind that if Todd is not ready because he's two weeks behind, we're going to be spinning our wheels again because I will not vote for approval or acceptance on the condition of no test pits. There's too many stormwater issues out there, in my opinion. So we'll shoot for the fifth.
October.
I'm just, excuse me, October third.
October third.
All right. Can I, at this point, feel appropriate to do a sidewalk to get a better understanding of the situation?
As we have done in the past.
Yeah, and I would appreciate, you know, if I could be in attendance.
Well, we would want you to leave it.
I could even bring a device if it helps. I could log in the coordinates roughly of the center of the basins and we could hike out to these locations and get a better understanding of, again, just the effort that's required and I'm, based on, again, I've only had a brief chance to speak with Todd, but based on that conversation, it sounds like I can meet most, meet his technical issues and then if, you know, he said it himself that he didn't see a reason why the planning board couldn't close without the test pits. It's just he is not going to issue his final approval until that's done and I, I think that once we get out there and see, I think that's a prudent approach for this project and, you know, I can, we can run through and I can work with Todd and Peter just to run through some of the engineering practices that we've looked at in designing this with the community.
So if you could email Carrie and propose some dates for us to do the sidewalk and in the past, those sidewalks, we've invited abutters. So I don't know if Carrie has any.
Do we want to continue to a sidewalk date? I mean, can, are we going to do it a weekend, a weekday?
It'll be a weekday. So, but it'll have to be, to be determined because.
Most of us are available.
I'm pretty much, schedule's flexible in my experience. If you guys give me a date, more than likely, I'm able to beat it just because it probably is a little bit more difficult to get all you folks together on one.
How four of us would be available.
Just give me maybe a couple options and then I'll be able to make that work.
Okay, so Carrie, if you could email us with some different options, I have to look at my schedule.
And then would you let us know?
Well, let the neighbors know.
Yes, you could, you have Carrie, what's that?
The difficulty not, not telling the neighbors ahead of time, but that's probably the best we could do.
Yeah, if you could make sure that you give Carrie contact info, maybe a couple of you up here.
Right, there's a sign in sheet. That way I have your information.
October third, what time?
Oh.
Six thirty?
Probably six.
At six?
Six.
Well, we started six sharp.
Let's make it six thirty. There may be some minor matters that we can attend to between six and six thirty.
May I suggest you do it at six fifteen and you can just always back it up instead of having a half. If nothing comes in, you just.
Yeah, six fifteen.
Six fifteen.
Six fifteen. Has it been seconded? I don't.
Is the motion still on the table?
Motion.
October thirteenth?
Yes.
I'll second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, next item on the agenda, the proposed special town meeting warrant articles. I didn't know we had any.
Well, a couple that I'm, I was proposing, I spoke to Todd earlier about some of them. So we had a couple issues come up under our zoning, zoning bylaws with the retreat lots.
I can't make that.
Way the retreat lot is written, needs some correction to it, which is administrative stuff. Basically, there was a double number of exceptions. We also had talked briefly about incorporating a peer reviews on retreat lot peer reviews. But I sat down with Todd earlier today because I was doing some research and I think we're already covered up that under our section.
I'm all over it.
Fifty-three ninety.
Fifty-three ninety?
Fifty-three ninety.
He's making it up.
So in section fifty-three ninety under our special permits, there is the language and there are reasonable fees.
This couple of.
Going to do is, I don't forget, we need to talk to the retreat this plan and like that's a good size one with that other. You would send it to Peter for a quote, come back with a quote and assess the developer for three hundred fifty-three G account for that fee. I mean, it could be a simple one, five hundred. Could be a complicated one thousand dollars if you set a flat fee.
Yeah, right. We don't want to set a.
So I think that could be sixty-two ninety.
The reason the fee sounds good to me is that they're going to have to design.
Obviously, with.
Yep, and we had our guys.
We do.
Right.
Because we need on the nineteenth, week later is the definition of the part.
So we have to have. We recommend it, so we go.
So keep that in mind.
We can both recommend next time. We already voted to recommend. The conditions and now we've got, now we've, we've got to have the, the warrant raised for the next meeting and if they, if they, if they don't meet the conditions, then we will rescind the recommendation. But assuming that's not going to happen, we have it all written and ready to go.
It's not something that has to be done at the special town meeting. We can wait for the animal, but if we can do it, it can be great.
What's the pressing is the street, right?
The street. That would be our biggest concern and last but not least.
We want to start getting that.
Right. Well, that would be on the application process. We don't.
I don't need to do it.
Right, right. So and then last but not least, earlier I mentioned that I wanted to amend our bylaws and the.